Good evening, everybody. Good to see so many faces here. This is a public hearing to receive testimony on the proposal to sell bonds in the amount of $3,335,000 for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund of the district. Melissa, will you please call roll?
Member Doshi.
Here.
Member Hannas.
Here.
Member Harris.
Here.
Member Olchik.
Here.
Member Samantia's absent. Member Weiner.
Here.
Member Hughes.
Here. All right, kind of to kick us off with some information on this, we're going to invite Todd Dreifall up to the podium and Kevin Russell's up here as well.
Fill in what I miss and forget. This is the hearing that is required under law prior to issuing of bonds for the district. And to quickly go through a quick timeline for the board and the community, this, I'd say this started several years ago when we worked through a draft master facility plan, and about a year ago, we held off on that piece and moving forward. At the December 7 budget and finance workshop, the board was presented with the concept and structure of doing a financial plan and putting that together and rolling into the next couple of years and building a plan that will come to the board shortly, in the next week or two, and then for it to be considered at the March meeting along with the staffing structure and the staffing for the next year, which is a big piece of the plan. In that conversation on December 7 was our needs and work on capital items, specifically looking at the lion's share of this project, which is the Pierce Downer Roof, about $1.5 million of work that needs to be done to replace the roof. Along with that is mechanical equipment at several other buildings and some significant asphalt work in service lots at buildings that have become dangerous and decaying to a point where it's significant. So, in our plan and our discussion was, given the environment that we are in, being able to borrow money and what we had available, that we would, on a short-term basis, look at a $3 million bond issuance, a restructuring of the current debt under the debt extension service base, so the tax rate is staying the same consistently. We push out the debt a little bit to what our current load is, and that is step one that would be this year. The following piece, we'd then be looking at sale of Longfellow, which would give proceeds for the district for the following year to do some capital work into the buildings and some, to deal with some of that infrastructure. And just to remind the board and the community that that master facility plan, though it was 200 and some odd million dollars, 100 and plus of that is maintenance and upkeep and it updates to building, to school buildings that needs to happen in the foreseeable future. Step one was this issuance of this debt here, restructuring of the current debt because it's at some very low rates historically. Step two is that Longfellow sale. Step three would be that hopefully, the possibility of a referendum, once we are out of what we call the COVID economy and the COVID slowdown, so that we could resume the work that the district had done for the last two, plus two and a half years of going through the strategic plan and the debt service and the master's facility development. So that is, started in earnest in December, certainly through FAC committee meetings and through board meetings in December and January. We continued that with the process with the hearings. The board took vote on resolution previously meeting, and now we are to the point where this is a by the hearing to express out what the purpose of the bonds are for. It's for capital purposes. They are working cash bonds. That's the structure that we legally have to take. We then bring them into working cash. We will bake them over to the capital fund. We will amend our budget at the end of this year because we have an increase in revenue if this is to go forward. And then, next month, you will have before you bids that we are sitting on, waiting for the board to approve, that we just received on roof and other work to be done for the summer. So we would begin, and I know we had, Kevin Barto had some significant leaks the other day over there, and so we know that we certainly have some issues that we need to replace that at this point. That is, the purpose of the issuance of the bonds, which is the purpose of, you know, the one thing we need to make sure we spell out in the hearing is what we're using them for. So with that, I have, unless the board has any questions, or if there are others to speak to them.
The, a big portion of this is restructuring outstanding bonds, and when we looked at that over in FAC, we were showing a bit of savings by taking the step because of the current rates. Does that still stand now that a little time has passed?
So, and, so we are looking, yes, we're still in a good position. There are two issuances. This is actually, this technically is actually for the new, the restructuring and the taxable piece, the board could do that, you know, as it needs. But, yes, there are two issuances that would happen. One is a tax exempt issuance that would go specifically to the capital fund for, you know, move, be transferred to the capital fund from working cash to cover those expenses and those projects. The other issue is to restructure the current debt. We extended it out a little bit, but we're allowed, but because of the interest rate is so much lower now, even for a taxable bond than a tax exempt bond, we're able to do that for savings and restructure in a way so that we're paying them off in a little bit quicker period than we would have had we not done that second issuance and simply just added on to the debt.
Right.
You know, for the $3 million. So we're taking advantage of the economy as much as we can, given it is, you know, taking a hit on us as well financially, but that's what we're trying to work through and use those things toward advantage to spread that, you know, to limit as much interest as possible for the district.
Appreciate that. Questions or comments from the board? Okay. Then at this time, if there is any written or oral testimony from the public regarding the bond sale, we will go ahead and invite you up to the podium now.
I'm Scott O'Connell, and I'm with the Downers Grove Watch. Dear President Hughes and members of the board, on January 11, the board approved a resolution calling for a public hearing to be held tonight. Please consider the following to be my written testimony for the proposed issuance of $3, 335,000 of working cash fund bonds being sold for working cash fund purchases, purposes allegedly. Continued within my testimony, there are questions that would be asked of the board, members of the administration, and various subject matter experts, although I have been told that the subject matter experts will not be available. At the conclusion of my oral presentation of this testimony, this written record will be submitted with Secretary Jervis. I'm providing this testimony so that the written record of this hearing contains my complete statement in its entirety, along with my recordings of the answers to the questions. The recording secretary must include this written testimony is submitted within the records of the hearing, and it must be properly labeled as an exhibit, reference within the minutes of the hearing. The first topic is the use of the bond proceeds, and my first question is directed to Mr. Dreifall, Assistant Superintendent for Business. Mr. Dreifall, you're the appointed treasurer for the school district, correct? You're the appointed treasurer for the school district, correct?
Yes, I'm sorry. Is this a question? I'm confused.
No, Louise, this is a period of testimony, but I mean...
Well, I'm hoping to get some answers to some questions regarding these bonds, and you've been in that position since July 1, 2018, correct?
Sir, if you can submit your, write your questions, I will respond to you as appropriate.
Well, the purpose of the hearing is to get answers to questions.
Now, the purpose of the hearing is to provide any written or oral testimony that you would like. We'd be happy to answer on the record and FOIA-able as well, any responses, but if you'd like to read all of your questions, so they're here on the record, we will make sure that, and the board will make sure, that any member of the administration will respond to you, but at this point, this is an opportunity.
Then I will read the questions into the record.
That'll be fine, and I'd be happy to make sure it gets answered.
So, are all of the surety bonds currently up to date, executed, and on file with the regional superintendent? Were there any, as of January 31, 2021, were there any outstanding inter-fund loans authorized by the Board of Education and not repaid that involved one or more of the district's various day-to-day operating funds? As of January 31, 2021, were there any outstanding inter-fund loans authorized by the Board of Education and not repaid that involved one or more of the district's bond trust funds? As of January 31, 2021, were there any outstanding inter-fund loans on the treasurer's books involving one or more of the district's various day-to-day operating funds that were not formally authorized by the Board of Education at a public meeting held in compliance with the Open Meetings Act? As of January 31, 2021, were there any outstanding inter-fund loans on the treasurer's books involving one or more of the district's various bond trust funds that were not formally authorized by the Board of Education at a public meeting held in compliance with the Open Meetings Act? Does the district have any intention of using any of the proceeds from the proposed 2021 working cash fund bonds to repay any inter-fund loans currently outstanding or any inter-fund loans that may occur at some point in the future? Does the district have any intention of using any of the proceeds from the proposed 2021 refunding bond to repay any inter-fund loans currently outstanding or any inter-fund loans that may occur at some point in the future? Treasurer Dreifall, as treasurer, have you ever diverted any assets belonging to one of the district's various day-to-day operating funds or various bond trust funds to any other fund of the district in order to pay the expenses of that fund without explicit board approval? Within the board packet for tonight's regular board meeting, the treasurer's report for January 2021 contains a fund balance of negative $17,448.67 for the district's debt service fund. Please explain in detail how you, as treasurer, were able to pay the expenses of that fund when the fund clearly did not have any available assets and no explicit loan was authorized at an open board meeting by the Board of Education. Within the board packet for tonight's regular board meeting, your treasurer's report for January 2021 contains a fund balance of negative $46,249.53 for the district's capital project fund. Please explain in detail how you, as treasurer, were able to pay the expenses of that fund when the fund clearly did not have any available assets. Regarding the working cash fund, how many separate and identifiable working cash funds are found within the treasurer's books? Is the district's working cash fund, or funds, if more than one, on a first-in, first-out basis or last-in LIFO or FIFO method of accounting? How do you anticipate segregating the 2021 working cash fund bond proceeds from the fund's current assets in a fund that has no authority to have sub-fund accounting and no authority to book expenses? Article 20 of the school code and the Constitution of Illinois both prohibit the sale of debt for no demonstrable need. If the bonds are being sold in anticipation of cash flow needs, a 36-month pro forma of anticipated cash flow loans is required. Have you prepared this analysis, and if so, have you provided it to the members of the Board of Education? Is there a projected need for tax anticipation warrants anytime in the next 36 months? The Illinois School Code and the Constitution of Illinois both prohibit the sale of debt for no demonstrable need. If the bonds are being sold for projects, a 36-month drawdown schedule is required. Have you prepared this analysis, and if so, have you provided it to the members of the Board of Education? That is all the questions I have for everybody who is here tonight. I will give this to...
Melissa's down over there.
There you are. Kind of hard to see.
Yeah, we kind of had to, COVID has had us move around quite a bit up here, so it's a little bit different.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here tonight looking to speak? And do we have any recorded messages?
Uh, nobody, no.
All right. Thank you very much for the testimony tonight, and then, now I need a motion to adjourn the hearing.
Some move.
Second.
All right, Melissa, will you please call roll?
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Hannas.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchik.
Aye.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried. The hearing is adjourned here at 7:15 PM. All right, it is now time for our regular monthly meeting of the Downers Grove Grade School District 58 Board of Education here on Monday, February 8, 2021, at 7:16 PM at the Downers Grove Village Hall. This meeting is being livestreamed for the public on the Village of Downers Grove's YouTube channel. Melissa, will you please call roll?
Member Doshi.
Here.
Member Hannas.
Here.
Member Harris.
Here.
Member Olchik.
Here.
Member Weiner.
Here.
And member Hughes.
Here. Members of the public who are viewing remotely may provide a public comment by calling 630 743 4085 and recording their comment. Comments will be accepted until we reach the public comment portion of the agenda. We will play all comments submitted remotely in the order in which they were received. I have allotted 30 minutes tonight for public comment. We're going to be starting off tonight with our flag salute, pledge of allegiance, so I want to welcome Mr. Leland Wagner from Pierce Downer School to help lead us in that. I'm assuming maybe you have your students recorded tonight?
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you. I have to have Mrs. Laurie Smith.
Oh, welcome as well.
Pierce Downer School. Thank you. I appreciate your time. Yes, we'll start with the flag salute with some of the members of our student council.
Hi, my name is Priya, and I'm fifth grade.
Hello, my name is Alex, and I'm also in fifth grade.
Hi, my name is Sajin, and I'm sixth grade. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That is six feet long. We did prepare a short video for you today, rather than just either one of us standing up here and telling you all about it. We thought it'd be great to let some of our staff tell you a little bit about the great things they've been doing this year. To get started, the whole idea behind the video is to help you understand a motto that you hear and see when you're going around Pierce Downer, which is, "We are PD." I remember my very first time going into Pierce Downer and seeing it in huge letters in the principal's office and thinking, okay, I need to know what that means exactly. So, I started by giving the staff some homework, asking them what it meant, and they actually all were given a wristband that says, "You are," and I asked them to fill that in, knowing that collectively, the staff together are part of the puzzle, one piece of the puzzle that makes Pierce Downer just what it is and what it means when we say, "We are PD." So, please enjoy the short video. Talking a little bit about... My name is Leland Wagner, and I am the proud principal here at Pierce Downer. Hello, my name is Leland Wagner, and I am the proud principal here at Pierce Downer School. A common phrase that you will hear and see around Pierce Downer is the motto, "We are PD." My goal for this video is to help you understand just what it means to be PD. While we have had some challenges this year, I am humbled by our resilience and response to not just meet, but exceed each challenge we face, and I am optimistic about our future and its possibilities. Possibilities that allow us to resume so many of the great things that have had to be temporarily paused while we add new and innovative ideas, skills, and mindsets. It seems fitting for our building to be named Pierce Downer, who was a farmer, since we are so committed to the growth of each and every student. Here at Pierce Downer, we are a family. We are dedicated, we are empathetic, we are so many things, which is what we mean when we say, "We are PD."
This year, there are seven sessions that make up the kindergarten class at PD. Children from the Pierce Downer and Lester communities are making new friends as they attend school together. The kindergartners have shown us that they can be flexible, independent, and responsible during this year. The kindergartners love learning, especially when there are days to celebrate different holidays and fun spirit days. The students have embraced the iPads. They love showing what they learned by sharing through Seesaw. They quickly learned how a Zoom call works when we were remote. Every day, the kindergartners show up to school with such joy. Some of their favorite times are brain breaks, self-directed drawings, math workplaces, and getting outside for some fresh air. We are kindergarten, we are PD.
Welcome to first grade at Pierce Downer. We feel it is important to focus on making connections with our families and our community. Birthday books on Zoom. Adopt a firefighter. Firefighter Bobby Zooms in. Chicago Wolves skates, reads aloud on Zoom. DGN, Introduction to Teaching, Ms. Mendez joins us for Lessons 2.
DuPage County Farm Bureau, Lessons Connecting Agriculture to Our Own Lives. Surprise readers, a favorite former substitute joins us for Read Alouds. Think First Presentation on Brain and Spinal Cord Injuries. Each first grader gets a bike helmet. We are first grade, we are PD.
Welcome to second grade. I'm Hannah Harland.
And I am Erin Contreras.
We teach the amazing second graders of Pierce Downer.
Each of our second graders thought of a word or phrase they want to focus on for this year. A common theme was all about focusing on fun.
Every day, we start with a riddle of the day in class meeting that allows us time to dance, laugh, and build relationships with one another. We love to sing, listen to music, and play throughout our learning together.
We end every day with our class mantra, "I am wonderful, I am smart, and I love who I am."
I am wonderful.
I am smart.
I love who I am.
We are second grade.
We are PD.
Welcome to third grade at Pierce Downer, where students enjoy sharing, celebrating, and even dancing with Mr. Wagner. They also enjoy creating art projects, as well as creating STEM projects. In this fun holiday STEM project, the students created Christmas trees out of gum drops and toothpicks. The challenge was to see how tall you could build a standing structure before it fell over. This is just one of the many ways we are learning and having fun in third grade. After all, we are third graders, and we are PD.
Pierce Downer fourth grade students have been working hard in tackling a variety of challenges. They recently began their fifth unit in the Benchmark Reading Series. This unit is called Technology for a Green Future. Students are reading a variety of texts to help them answer the essential question of, how do we make decisions about developing new technology? Students write a variety of letters to the editor calling for different energy sources for Make-A-Least Town. Fourth grade math students are working on a variety of strategies for addition and subtraction problems. Students are given an opportunity to use multiple strategies to solve a problem before explaining and sharing their ideas with peers. Students have also been learning about various Black Americans and their contributions as a part of Black History Month. Even during all our hard work, we still take time to dance, move, and have fun. We are fourth grade, we are PD.
Welcome to fifth grade at Pierce Downer.
In fifth grade, we love dressing up for Spirit Days.
Our fifth graders love to show their Panther pride, and they look forward to the announcement of Panther of the Month. This year, brought back guest readers, we invite volunteers to come in and talk about how reading fits into the real world.
A little bit of normal in our fifth grade world, students were able to create art in the classroom. Another way parents were able to volunteer this year was through our Read Aloud, no summit out of sight.
We are fifth grade, we are PD.
Our sixth grade students study ancient civilizations. Some of our lessons integrate history, reading and language arts, math, science, and art. Here are three awesome Grecian vases where students created mythological scenes of Perseus and Medusa. We are sixth grade, we are PD.
Hi, I'm Mrs. David, and I'm the art teacher at Pierce Downer School. My students in first grade through sixth grade have done over 100 Seesaw activities created by the art teachers in District 58. These are just some of the highlights of our very special projects. We work on Seesaw and on Zoom to complete activities each week.
Hi, I'm Laurie Smith, and I'm the assistant principal here at Pierce Downer Elementary School. I am so very proud to be a part of the Pierce Downer family and school community. At Pierce Downer, we are all in. We see all of our students as all of our responsibilities. We are constantly working behind the scenes to meet all of our students' needs. We have a student services team that works daily with our general education staff to provide services and supports to all of our students. Our student services team is comprised of a reading specialist, two learning behavior specialists, a part-time occupational therapist, social worker, speech and language pathologist, and school psychologist, as well as a few instructional assistants, who all work together to meet the needs of all of our students, whether they need a little support or a lot of support. At Pierce Downer, we are all in, we are PD.
Hello, my name is Nikki Blatner.
And my name is Melissa Poyer.
And we are the co-presidents of Pierce Downer's PTA. Although this year has been quite different, our PTA has continued its work to support our staff, students, and families. This year, we are thrilled to welcome our new principal, Leland Wagner, to Pierce Downer. He has done a great job, especially having come on board during a pandemic. We are grateful for his and our assistant principal Laurie Smith's partnership and are looking forward to all we can do together in the years to come. A primary focus of ours for this year is to help support local in whatever small ways we can. We think it's important, especially this year, to help give back to local businesses. They've been so generous over the years and have done so much in donating to and supporting our schools. The main ways in which we've done this is by supporting local DG restaurants in monthly dine-outs and participating in the Downers Grove Girls Day Out Event, where Pierce had the highest attendance, resulting in an extra $250 to PD. We also sold Downtown Downers Bucks before the holidays to help keep spending local. Our families have enjoyed participating and having a excuse to dine out and shop. For the Downtown Downers Bucks, we sold over $2,700 worth of bucks. Another way we're supporting local is by helping our neighbors in need. After Halloween, the Healthy Kids Committee partnered with parents in collecting pounds and pounds of candy that were donated to the Fish Pantry and St. Joseph Pantry to provide sweet treats to those in need, helping to brighten their day. The Service Learning Committee partnered with Sharing Connections, hosting a toy drive this winter, helping five- to nine-year-olds struggling with poverty. The SLC also partnered with the World Relief DuPage Aurora Program, hosting a coat drive supporting those in need.
Another goal of ours is doing all we can in these unique times to support our staff, as we know this year has not been easy for them either. We started the year by partnering with the Downers Grove Junior Women's Club to chalk the walk. Students and parents chalked inspiring messages... Students and parents chalked inspiring messages welcoming our staff back to school. We also provided a welcome-back lunch for our staff, conference night meals, and stocked the teachers lounge with coffee and drinks for those much-needed and deserved caffeine breaks. Even though the holiday classroom parties could not happen in their traditional sense, the PTA coordinated with families to help provide teachers with supplies they needed to do holiday crafts and games. The teachers did a fantastic job making holidays fun for the kids. A few other ways in which we were able to support and encourage students this year while they were not physically in school were, our welcome-back committee placed yard signs out for new Pierce Downer students to connect with Pierce Downer parents to act as mentors and a point of contact for any questions they may have navigating the new school. We also hosted a new family kindergarten Zoom meeting with Mr. Wagner to welcome again new families and offer a forum where they could ask questions about PD. Our birthday committee created a monthly birthday board for the students when they were back in school to put a smile on the kids' faces. While our in-person fundraising has not been able to take place this year, we were still able to participate in a successful fall fundraiser with Charleston Wrap. This year, we also participated in a holiday fundraiser for the first time with Minted, where families were able to receive a discount on their holiday cards while a percentage of it went back to the school. We raised over $800. Another virtual fundraiser we've been able to offer this year was Koha and Amazon Smile, which is another way to support local. Although this year has been challenging, we have found ways to continue supporting our mission and enhancing the environment for PD students, staff, and families. We continue to look for new ways to build our community and support our staff. We are extremely grateful for our continued support and dedication of our Pierce Downer families and staff. It is a team effort, and we could not do this without you, especially this year. Thank you.
That was just a little insight into some of the great things we're doing throughout the year. When we talk about a spotlight on our school, I think it's important to really emphasize the work that our staff, the students, and the families are putting in. We started the year kind of railing behind the quote, "If the wind will not serve, take to the oars." And I just want to really commend Pierce Downer, the community, and its staff and students for really picking up those oars and making it work. It's been a huge success this year, and thank the board very much for your support.
Principal Wagner, Assistant Principal Smith, thank you for being here. We're grateful that we're actually able to have people back with us in person again. I've said that once before, so I don't want to jinx it, but it was great. And I can't wait till the day we can welcome your students back into the building. But thank you for all your hard work, and in your first year in the district, so thank you very much for all the hard work.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we got a couple of non-action reports tonight. The first one is going to be a spotlight on our schools, and it's an update regarding the Education Foundation. So welcoming up Megan Hewitt.
Good evening, school board. Thank you so much for inviting me here tonight to talk a little bit about our Education Foundation. This year has looked different for all of us, including the foundation, so I just wanted to share a few ways that they have adapted to change. So our foundation, for any of you who might not be familiar with them, they were founded about 20 years ago to serve, to help support us in enhancing education. And they do that by providing teacher grants to our teachers, and they also host a variety of events that recognize our teachers, staff, and students. And they also support some programs like the Reading Games that encourage children to really love learning. And they can only provide those programs by raising funding to support them. So they typically host events such as Oktoberfest, Harlem Wizards, the Spring Concert. All of those events, of course, were paused this year, but other events or other programs like the Green Apple Awards have been able to continue. So here is a few photos that highlight what some of our foundation events looked like in pre-COVID times. Hopefully, we can return to this type of setting again in the near future. But last spring, when COVID happened, we were in the middle of planning two important events that the foundation is very proud of, Select 58 and the Distinguished Service Awards. Through a little bit of creativity, we were still able to host both of the programs. Select 58 is an awards program that honors eighth graders for exceptional service. So instead of having our typical in-person banquet event, we moved virtual, and we still recognize each student. Fifty-eight eighth graders are acknowledged for their service work. We still recognized each of the 58 students with a fancy plaque and a shirt and a few other awards. And we also put together a video that we shared as widely as we could on social media, and on our website, in our community newsletter, and in school newsletters that really honored each of these students and tried to make them feel as special as possible. Likewise, our Distinguished Service Awards program celebrates our teachers and staff. They are nominated by community members, and each year, two staff members receive the official Distinguished Service Award. We had to change this program a little bit as well. This year, we asked each of the nominators, I think there was about 30 or so people, staff members who were nominated, we asked each nominator to create a video of themselves reading their essay, so all of the nominees could still get the experience of seeing the person who nominated them explain why they're so exceptional. All of the nominees received goodie bags with some awards in them, and the two winners, Diane Peterson and Sarah Brost, both received surprise visits at their homes with their awards and a surprise like, "Hey, you won!" So that was, they both enjoyed that very much. And then finally, we made a video with snippets of each of the nominees explaining why they chose their, or each of the nominators explaining why they selected their nominee. So I'm going to play about the first 20 seconds or so of this video so you can get a sense of what these nominators said.
We are happy to nominate Shannon Arnold for the District Service Award because she always sets high expectations for her students along with meeting their individual needs and learning styles.
I nominated Shannon Arnold because she's an amazing kindergarten teacher.
The instructional assistants from the reading room nominate Shannon Arnold. Come on down.
We nominated Ms. Atkins.
Because she's a fantastic teacher who deserves the award.
This teacher has brought me a long way. She is one of the best teachers.
Just gives you a little sample of some of the really sweet things that our teachers, fellow teachers, parents, guardians, and students even said about their teachers and staff members. So I encourage you, if you haven't seen it, the full video is about five minutes long, and it's really sweet, and it's on our YouTube page. So in addition, the foundation wanted to find new ways to help the community. They realized a lot of people in our community were hurting, so they started the COVID Family Support Fund, which is a mechanism to raise money and to give back to families who are struggling. So they raise money a few different ways. Individuals can donate money to an online platform called Spot Fund. Some of our PTAs and some of our community groups, such as the Highland Playground Group, for example, and the Community, there's a group that formed, and after our teacher, John Bologna, created a mural called the Community Mural. There was a group that formed that held a T-shirt fundraiser. So through those groups, they donated money to give back. And then also, local organizations also donate, made some donations to the COVID Family Support Fund. And then last month, through the advocacy of Caroline Kellum, Brian Kuduski, and Janet Alkala, the Downers Grove Township also gave the Education Foundation over $7,500 in CARESAC funding for the COVID Family Support Fund. Here's some photos from some of those donations. So since the COVID Family Support Fund started, over $23,000 has been donated, and that doesn't even include the 600 family meal donation. A local podiatrist donated 600 family meals, which is about 2,400 individual meals to help families in need. Just amazing, so generous. And so the funding that we did receive was used to purchase grocery store gift cards in mostly increments of $50, but there were a few $100 ones. And we work to discreetly distribute these gift cards to families who are struggling, families who might have always been struggling, and also families who were doing all right and then were financially affected by COVID-19. So just in December and January alone, we distributed 160 gift cards worth $8,500 to District 58 families. So we have, right now, all of our current supply of gift cards has been emptied, and the foundation will be delivering another batch either later this week or next week. So that's something that we've really appreciated the foundation's help with. The Teacher Grant Program has continued this year. It's a little bit smaller, but this is a program that our teachers really appreciate. It's an opportunity for them to think big and think of an idea that would enhance education in their students' lives, but they might not have the money to fund it themselves. The district might not have the money to fund it, so they apply for a grant. I'm not going to read all the descriptions, but I do want to verbally announce each of the names of the teachers and staff who received grants this year, because I am very proud of the work they do. And seeing some of these grants in action is really, really incredible. So congratulations to Kendall Buzy, Katie Gallagher, Georgina Cervantes, Mary Liversky, Kate Nippel, Nicole Faroli. Mary Liversky was a second one to her. Lester Hesterman, Jamie Cryer, Christina Forsley, Lucy Alfred, Alison Brechtel, Joan Momson, Sarah Pinkas, Jennifer Johnson, second one for Christina Forsley, and Natalie Nodrdonato. So again, they each have worked really hard to put together some exceptional tools for their classrooms. And many of these grants really incorporated some elements of remote learning into them to make them relevant to both students who are learning in person as well as at home. The foundation's Green Apple Awards program has continued this year. This is a really interesting concept where we invite the community to make a green apple donation to a teacher or staff member who has made a difference in their life. They make a donation to the foundation, they write a personal message, and then that staff member receives a green apple award that has that personalized message from the donor written inside it. Each of these staff members gets recognized via a news release in our newsletter and on social media, but they also really appreciate, you know, seeing that personalized message and knowing that they really made a difference in their students' lives. And then new this year, I mean, actually, this idea, the original concept of the parent education series launched last year. The foundation hosted Detective Rich Wistaki, who gave a presentation in person to junior high students and parents regarding digital safety and tech safety. And that was very well received in February of 2020. We had to put the brakes on in-person parent education web series due to COVID, but the foundation reorganized this concept into a virtual experience. And earlier this month, they hosted a local child psychiatrist for a session on how to help your child during COVID. Our own school board member, Tracy, helped with that, helped moderate that, as did Dr. Russell. And we had a great turnout. I think that's a topic that parents were very interested in learning more about, and I know the foundation is looking forward to developing more of these types of presentations in the future. So looking ahead, they're hoping to resume their regular fundraising events as soon as possible. I know they're still hoping to do something with Oktoberfest this year. We don't know how it would look like, but that is their capstone event that takes place every September. But more information will be coming out on that probably over the summer. We are continuing to host Select 58 and Distinguished Service Awards this spring. Both events will be virtual. Applications for both, along with more information, will be coming out in the next two weeks. So that's all. Any questions about the Education Foundation?
Thank you so much, Megan, for being here. It's great to actually have you back in the room, because normally you're here with us all the time, but we've had some limitations on how many people we can have in the room, so it's great to have you here. I'm sure I speak for everybody up on the board that we can't wait for those events to come back. And I know we have a lot of fun in attending and volunteering and stuff along those lines. And I did want to take a moment and say, we normally focus on our kids and the teachers, but the focus that you've had on the families impacted financially right now is, I think, really meaningful to the community as a whole, so thank you guys for that focus. It was great to hear about it.
Yeah, thank you. The foundation has done a wonderful job just getting those funds into the hands of people who need it the most. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Thanks, Megan.
All right, Justin Sissel, want to step down here and give us a little bit of a snapshot on the winter data?
Thank you very much. Tonight, we want to provide just a brief district-level overview of our winter benchmarking data. The window to collect this data really closed in the middle of last week, so from, in the sense of having a full district overview, we've only had these numbers a short time. But we did want to make sure to take some time to talk about that this evening. And then as is typical in an upcoming curriculum workshop, we'll talk a little bit more in-depth about some of these things. As we talk about it, we also, as we've done with everything this year, want to acknowledge the uniqueness of this year and continue to show how we do use this data even amidst the unique parameters during a pandemic during this school year. Every time we give a data presentation, I like to include the definitions. I know that our board is very familiar with these, so I'm going to purposefully move pretty quickly through them, but they're here for reference for anyone who may want to look back. So again, the RIT score, when we're talking about MAP, is literally just that, the score that a student achieves. When we talk about the mean and median RIT percentile, two different measures of central tendency to identify the performance of a large group of students. The achievement percentile is one that does sometimes cause a bit of confusion. This is our achievement compared to all of the other schools in the norming study where students are in the same grade and have had the same number of weeks of instruction between assessment periods. And then when we talk about growth, we have both the MAP growth figure, which is what MAP predicts a student should achieve from point A to point B based on their previous score. And then we have the School Conditional Growth Index, which, again, similar to the achievement percentile, compares us to other schools or other districts based within the norm study. As we look at this set of data, obviously, we know that we've been instructing during a pandemic. And so when we start to think about winter of last year, December of 2019 to January of 2021, we're all fully aware of the number of changes that have happened in our educational system. And so that really is one thing that we need to keep in mind as we look at all of this, and recognizing that our school year this year does realize an overall reduction in instructional time as we work to provide our students with everything we possibly can during the pandemic. We also note that this year, we have continued with our math curriculum adoption. So there are times when you will see what's known as an implementation dip in math scores as students and teachers become accustomed to a new sequence of instruction, to really the kind of the new language of some of those core resources and what that looks like. We also acknowledge that our fall assessments were fully remote during our winter benchmarking period. We invited students, in some cases, to come on site for those assessments, but there were a large percentage of those assessments that occurred remotely as well. And that just can have a number of environmental factors that can affect a student performance in any number of directions, more positively, more negatively, as compared to what happens in a school setting. We also want to remember that last year at this time, we started talking about winter-to-winter growth rather than fall-to-winter growth, because last school year, we moved away from that fall MAP assessment. And so we'll continue to talk about winter-to-winter as we go forward, recognizing that winter is defined sort of as the checkpoint, and really, we're looking forward to looking over that full year of growth when we receive the spring data later on. We also spoke at length in October at the Curriculum Workshop about the new 2020 norms from NWA, and so there's a lot of information. from NWEA, and so there's a lot of information around that. As we think about norms, one of the key thoughts to apply, and this comes directly from NWEA, is to remember that all of their predictions, all of their percentiles and growth assignments are based on normative data that was collected during typical years of instruction. And so while we certainly still can use norms to take a look at things, we have to remember that those norms expect student achievement and growth based on a standard year of instruction. There are no pandemic norms. And so what we are comparing to is what would be expected in a typical year. At this moment in time, we really have no way to compare to anything around instruction during this pandemic year. So it's just something to keep in mind as we go through the data. So we always try to start with just that moment in time, what does our reading MAP data look like this winter? The columns to the far right in shaded in blue, those are the growth metrics. The left columns are the achievement metrics. So as we take a look at this, one of the things that we notice right away is those achievement percentiles are incredibly high. That median percentile is really rather high across the board for our achievement in reading. You also may notice that, in this case, the mean and the median percentiles are a bit further apart than we're used to seeing. Usually, they're within a point or two or three, and there is some greater distance between the mean and the median. Statistically, what that tells us is that the median, in that case, becomes a stronger metric, because there is something within the average computation that is pulling away from center. So in this case, we could begin to suggest that there may be some outliers on the low end of achievement that are pulling the average away from center in that case. The other thing we want to take a look at, obviously, are the growth projections. So we are definitely used to seeing that percentage of students meeting or exceeding their growth projections more in the 60s and 70s in terms of percentile rather than the 50s and 60s. And so while these numbers aren't a cause for panic in any sense, we're still, you know, above 50% tells us we're doing what we should be expected to do based on MAP, we are used to seeing more of those growth targets achieved and some of those higher school conditional growth percentiles. So we'll keep that in mind as we move forward. Another way to look at that projected growth is just to kind of visualize it. And so I've included this visual tonight to show two things. One, that proximity is not as distant when it's represented visually as it might look in the previous numbers, but also to note that on the vertical axis where it says RIT growth, those are actual RIT points. That's the difference between, you know, the difference between 12 and 16 points is the difference between a child's score of 218 and 222. And so the distance between those targets can actually be rather small when we're talking about growth. It can be one or two points for an individual student that can have an impact on those scores. We like to show the historical trends, so these are our median percentiles in reading across the board. And again, I will always be cautious to not overinterpret any one data set or any one metric within it. But if we think about the idea that this is asking us to look at our achievement that would be expected in a typical year, a non-pandemic year, and we look at the fact that those median percentiles are as high as or higher than, in many cases, the percentiles we've seen in the past couple of years, that's a really exciting thing to note. It means that despite the challenges that have been presented to us this year, our students are maintaining or exceeding that median achievement that we've seen over the past several years. Again, the achievement percentile showing similar things, and even some higher, in some cases, percentiles. Again, as you look across cohorts, some are up a couple of percentiles over the course of a year, a couple are down a couple of percentiles, but we're still seeing that maintenance of a really high reading achievement. When we compare the growth, we certainly will acknowledge that this year, yes, those numbers are a little bit lower than what we've seen last year. And so this is something that we're going to need to look further into. What are the pieces that are informing that growth? And there are a couple of slides further on that we can take a look at which, how do we best address that to ensure that we are continuing to see both high achievement and high growth for our students in the district? Looking at math with the same metrics, again, we see growth meets and exceeds is in the 50s and in a couple of cases, lower. Those second-grade metrics, I should have mentioned in the reading slide as well. When you're looking at winter-to-winter and you're looking at current second grade, we have to remember that the time that that growth target was set was when the test was read to the students in the winter of their first grade year. Their achievement now is when the assessment is not read to them, and they are doing it independent of that piece of support. So we often, NWEA, points to a difference in some of that performance. So it's something that we actually have seen a little bit more consistently. And again, we want to remember that those growth percentiles and growth targets are based on what would be expected in a typical year of instruction. Again, even considering the implementation of a new math curriculum, as we scroll down the median percentiles, to be at the 68th percentile and above in every grade level with some far exceeding that is representative of strong achievement. As you can see in the achievement percentile column, all of those are at the 84th percentile and above. So compared to other similar schools with similar districts with similar weeks of instruction, or same weeks of instruction, I should say, in a typical year, that is how our students are performing. And then similarly, we can see that growth to see where that difference is. Obviously, yes, the second grade visual can kind of exemplifies what we were talking about, the second grade, but the rest, much closer to that 50th percentile. Historical MAP medians. Again, in this moment, we're seeing increases pretty much across the board with a couple of cohorts dipping with that second grade group, but again, pretty strong performance. The achievement percentile, similarly. And then again, those growth percentiles. And again, the distance here between the percent of meets and exceeds from winter of 19 to 20 versus winter of 20 to 21, not as vast as the differences we observed in reading, for sure, but still something we want to see, we would like to see, that same 60, 70th percentile of our students meeting and exceeding those goals. Obviously, again, we go back to everything with MAP. If you are at 50%, that is what the assessment is expecting. We just want to continue to see our students move beyond that basic expectation.
Is, Justin, just a question on that slide.
Sure.
That one jumps out at me, right?
Absolutely.
So I guess I'm looking for your expertise, like what insights did you kind of come to as a result of looking at that and what drove that one?
So again, at first look, we were looking at, you know, again, we'll go back to, if you look all the way across, right now, it tells us that only 26% of the students met or exceeded their MAP projected growth goal. And so that calculation plays into the school conditional growth percentile. They're related. So what we really need to do is take a look at, why is that the case? Is it because we have a number of students who are right on the cusp, or do we really have a number of students who have just made minimal growth? I'm going to continue to factor in that difference between the first grade and second grade assessment. And so, you know, the comparison when we look at the end of this year from the fall-to-spring and things like that will be another piece to look at. But really, to be frank, Steve, I can't tell you right now what is causing, I can tell you what's causing it is the students not meeting or exceeding their growth targets. Which students are those? That's what's being done more at the building level, and we're beginning to work on that. And I'll show you some of the graphs we use to identify, how do we determine where the students are, you know, because some of those students who are not meeting or exceeding their growth goals are also achieving at a very high level. If we look back to the meeting and achievement, we know that they're up there. So what we need to do is see, is there a plateau in there somewhere at second grade or in certain places as we identify that?
You know, as a board member, I'd be interested in kind of that next level and next level and next level analysis that's going to be coming out of that building level discussion. So anything you can kind of provide us, I think, because, you know, once again, it's interesting times, you know, we're, you know, and another thing is like, you know, can we slice this data and say, you know, this is the hybrid group versus the remote, you know, I guess kind of get into that level analysis, what sort of insights? You know, we always kind of get the data as, you know, here's the high-level summary, you know, how do we kind of get that, those building level conversations fed back to us and kind of what actions we're taking?
No, I appreciate that. And I think that's the kind of conversation I'd like to have at the Curriculum Workshop, which will now land in March. But when we have a chance, there's a couple other pieces of information I think we'll be able to bring back at that point to really dig into it further, and by then, to have shown how we've responded to it at that point.
Thank you.
So again, going forward, the general analysis says that we're seeing significantly high achievement with average or slightly below average growth. And so, as I just mentioned, we have had building-level data teams look at overall performance, and then certainly at some of the specific student performance, continuing to remember all of those factors we've talked about. You know, again, we want to use this information to inform our decision-making, but we want to use it with care as we think about all of the other information we're currently collecting around student performance in our classrooms, both onsite and remotely. One of the ways, as I just mentioned, that we can look at achievement and growth next to each other and try to figure out how do we, where do we target this, what is causing some of those growth scores to look different, are charts like this. So this is a representation of one of our schools, where each dot is a student in the given grade level. And so if you look, the vertical axis is growth and the horizontal axis is achievement. So to focus in on second grade, we can see that there's a whole cluster of students right there at the very bottom of the growth axis for this particular building. So that's question number one, is let's take a closer look at these particular students. Those, you know, that cluster is a low-growth, low-achievement cluster, so that's where we really would want to focus some attention. But we also want to look to be sure our students that are further to the right in those graphs, but still on the lower half, that's another question around meeting or exceeding. So we're seeing higher achievement but lower growth. And you can see how each grade level looks a little bit different. You know, if we look just the one grade over in third grade, the number of students clustered in that lower-left quadrant is much smaller, whereas there are still some students in that lower-right quadrant where they're achieving higher, but maybe we didn't realize as much growth in this particular year. So this is the kind of analysis. And then if we were, if I was working on the actual screens here, when I hover my mouse over that dot, it will show me the individual student and their score. And so that's the kind of analysis that we're able to do to really focus in on not just broad level, but as we go each layer down, which students are we talking about and what kinds of supports do we need to think about putting in place going forward? Another interesting way to look at it is to think about the percentiles and then what the outliers look like. So in this representation, as you look down vertically, where you start to see individual dots, those represent students that are seen as outliers based on the overall grade level performance. And so just as an example, as you look over the blue and orange, or the 2018, 19, and 1920 data, there are very few outliers at the bottom of that, whereas in 2021, the number of outliers per grade level tends to increase pretty significantly, where it does increase at all. And so that's another way to start to look at things. Our overall performance falls in a certain range. This year, we are seeing more outliers to that range. And so again, is that the result of pandemic instruction? Is that the result of a new math curriculum? Is that the result? Those are all the questions we need to continue to look forward and answer. So again, as we go forward, continual conversations at the building level, one of the things that I don't think we've mentioned publicly is that we have commissioned what's called a similar schools study through NWA MAP. And this is a study that is something they will do. It's not something that comes with our typical subscription, but basically, it will compare our own district's achievement and growth to schools across the nation in their entire norming study, whose demographics are comparable to ours. So we often say, who should we be comparing ourselves to? NWA has taken our demographics and said, okay, schools, districts of this size with these types of demographics, this is what those, how those other schools are performing in their data. And so this is going to help us tremendously as we start to have those conversations about key performance indicators and things like that. That's part of our spring conversation, but it's also been a conversation we've had, and many of you have asked the question, how accurate are these goals? Are they super lofty? Are they reasonable? Where should we be? This study should bring us a lot closer to a conversation observing our data over the past few years and what other schools look like in a given year that resemble us. And so we're looking forward to, we just yesterday received, sorry, not yesterday, just Friday, received the initial data, but we have a couple of consultation calls scheduled with NWA to go through what that looks like, what it means for us. And so I'm really looking forward to bringing that information back around to the board and community, both through the district leadership team and then hopefully at the March 22nd Curriculum Workshop. I want to just mention some of the initial planning around additional student support, because again, though our numbers are not reason for panic, we know that we want to continue to provide support for all students throughout this time. And so one of the things we'll continue to do, just like we have in each trimester so far, is we'll really look at what are those essential standards for trimester three? How do we make sure that as we're making instructional decisions, we are targeting across grade levels and content areas what we need our students to achieve and be proficient in for that next grade level readiness? We're also looking ahead to summer programming, and one of the things we're going to provide this year that will be new is a targeted summer period of programming that really will be accessible only to those students who meet a certain set of criteria, and that criteria really will be our identification of their academic need to be prepared for the next grade level. So we'll have one summer session that will look like that, and then we'll have a second summer session that will resemble our typical summer program, which really is designed for grade level readiness. You know, you can join as an incoming kindergartner through eighth grader and focus on those reading and math skills that will help you to begin the next school year successfully. And so we're hoping that both of those programs will be able to happen onsite, and we're, plans are beginning for those. We're also, obviously, continuing to work through the school improvement process. You know, while portions of that have been put not on hold, but have been slightly delayed in terms of some of the overall enhancements, there certainly have been wonderful conversations happening in our building around this data over the past several weeks, and it's causing input on both the specific intervention plans, but also input on what do we need to do with our core instruction? What do all teachers need to do to respond to some of the things we're seeing and ensure that we are letting ourselves adjust our instruction to react to the data that we're seeing? The last thing I just do want to put up in front are the assessment windows that are coming up in the spring. Those first three assessments are state/federally mandated assessments. We received another notification from ISBE just this morning that shared with us that while ISBE will be advocating for a waiver, should a waiver and should a waiver become available, they will apply. We also are at the point now where we do need to begin preparations as if that waiver may not come, so that we are able to prepare for these assessments. And so we are beginning that process. We, you know, while I, there could be many other ways to spend the instructional time that would be taken up by these assessments. We also, if the mandate exists, we will continue to approach this with the attitude that we have for the past few years, which is not simply compliance, but like everything else, putting forth our best effort to make sure that we are preparing our students and our staff for those assessments. That's the end of tonight's presentation. Happy to take any questions.
Justin, I'm just trying to kind of gauge my analysis of the data against your sophisticated understanding, far more sophisticated than my own. So our achievement, when we're measuring students' achievement, we're looking at how they fared when compared, it's a nationally-normed test, so we're comparing them against all other students in the nation taking the same test within the same window. Is that correct?
Correct. And it also factors in how many weeks of instruction have happened. So, yeah.
So, and then when we're measuring growth, we're looking at, we're doing winter-to-winter growth, and they're being compared against all those students across the nation who have, who started at the same point and had the same numbers of weeks of instruction and so on and so forth. Is that correct?
Yes. And the growth, just to clarify, is based, the achievement is based on student age and grade level. The growth is based on where the student began. So students who began in a similar group.
Okay. And that makes sense. Thank you for that clarification. So I guess, as I'm thinking about this, I'm thinking about, you know, we can celebrate our achievement because it looks great. However, I'm just, we talked about how we are in a unique year, and across the nation, this pandemic has affected everybody. So I mean, I wouldn't, I'm not really sure if that reveals a lot about how we're doing within this pandemic, because we're being compared against all of other students who are also operating within the same, you know, goofy situation where they might not have, they might not have limited access to instruction. So it's hard for me to draw a conclusion. I guess what I'm trying to look for is I'm trying to look for an understanding of how well do we understand, as a district, as a school building, and at the classroom level, how well do we understand what gaps have been created for our students during this pandemic? And is this tool helping us get there? And if it's not, and if it's not IAR, and if it's not something we have currently, you know, my hypothesis is still, despite our best efforts, and when I say our, I mean everybody, not just 50, I mean, like, as a society, despite our best efforts, my hypothesis is all of these interruptions to regular classroom instruction is going to hurt kids academically and socially, emotionally. So do we have, is this helping us get a grip on the extent of our various students' needs?
It absolutely can. What you are seeing tonight doesn't get to the level that you're looking for, because by its very nature, we're talking, we are looking at overall median percentiles. When you start to look at individual student reports within MAP, it does break down further into subsets of mathematics and reading. So that's kind of step one, is we can take a look at, are there specific subsets within a class, a grade level, a student, that we are seeing relative growth or relative areas of opportunity, or less relative growth, honestly? That's one way to look at it. We have, you know, we do have other assessments that are available. There are the same classroom assessments that teachers have been using, and that relates to our standards-based reporting system and what that all looks like. Certainly, you know, when you take a look at some of these things, we are looking to give students some grace as we we are looking to give students some grace as we think about formal reporting. But we do have the same reading assessments we've been giving for the past few years through the benchmark series and through StudySync. And so we do have some of that kind of classroom level data to look at first. So I guess my answer to your question is yes, I believe MAP does help us do that. I don't think any one assessment is going to give us all of that information. I think it's going to be looking at performance in aggregate as we go through. The IAR, again, it, it doesn't, that one breaks down less for us in terms of those individual things. So whether or not we end up having that assessment, I, you know, that, that will give us broader, not as specific pieces of information.
So based on what you're saying, it seems to me like at the micro level, at the classroom level, we have a better, better understanding of how each individual student is being impacted, which is probably preferable than, than where I feel right now at the macro level, kind of understanding how this is impacting the district.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I'll tell you anecdotally, just hearing from teachers and committees, we've been working on, there, there is a lot of conversation around really feeling more confident in this moment than we have up until this point in the year in terms of pinpointing some of those student needs now that we do have a whole nother dataset and really looking to further enhance the differentiation that's happening. I think the other, the other macro piece we can look at is that designation of the essential standards. So these are where we as educators have kind of said, in a typical year, we may instruct and assess on the, all of these standards. We are prioritizing this group of standards and therefore identify, creating knowledge, you know, deliberately a gap in another area. And that's something we'll have to continue to do some analysis of as we go through both this year and next year, recognizing that the students who will enter the next grade level have had strong emphasis here. And we have, when we had to make some deliberate decisions about what we could and could not fit into this instructional model, we made those choices and we know where those are. So that's the other place. I think you're right. When we get down to where are those gaps? The gaps will ultimately reside with an individual student, just like they do in a typical school year.
If we're going to talk about this again in March, but one thing that stood out to me was seventh grade with the school conditional growth, both for math and for reading and eighth grade. I would love if there was a deeper dive in that to see why it's so significantly less growth in those two grade levels than some of the others. Those are the low line, low, low, low grades, it looks like, the 12%. I don't know if it had anything to do with sometimes they were taking the test at home because one day they, like for my son, one day it was at home and one day it was in person, I believe.
Yep. That's correct for the, for middle school. Yep.
So anyway, I just, I saw the school conditional growth on both reading and math for seventh grade. And it was significantly lower. So I'd love to learn more about that.
Absolutely. And we can, we can do those same kind of side-by-side achievement and growth graphs for seventh and eighth grade. Those weren't on, those samples weren't on this presentation. We can certainly take a look at that.
Cause they're, they're going to be going on to 99. So I'd like to make sure that as they move on to the next grade in another district, that we're preparing them for high school. Thank you.
Couple of clarifying questions. One to Greg's point around the national norming and how to read this data. My understanding was that NWA releases national norms, that they provide your score instantaneously once you take the test. And so they're not actually comparing your score as a student to other students taking the test right now.
Correct.
They're comparing your score to students that have taken the test historically in previous years when those norms were defined. Is that, is that right? Am I interpreting it right?
That is, yeah, that's accurate, which is why we talked about the idea that we are, we are not like we, and I, maybe I misheard member Harris. Like we, we don't have a way to compare ourselves to the students who are taking the assessment in January of 2021. We have the ability to compare ourselves to the students who have taken the assessment from 2015 through 2019, which is what they used, I believe, for the norming study.
So what this won't tell us is how did our students fare during the pandemic relative to other students taking the test at the same time? What it will tell us is how did our students fare in the pandemic relative to previous years our students took the same test? Is that fair?
It is fair. And I would, and I would say more simply, it tells us where our students are today. I mean, I think it's going to be difficult to parse out, you know, what is pandemic related? What is student related? You know, at some level, it's, you're, you're right. The comparisons are, are to where we have performed previously or what would happen in a typical year. When we get down to that micro level, it really just tells us where Justin is today as a reading student based on this one measurement for which, you know, hopefully he was at his best.
Great. Thanks for that. A couple more questions. One, the similar schools study, is that similar schools, i.e. like Pierce Downer compared to a similar school across the country? Or is it District 58 compared to similar districts across the country?
Karat, I'm going to say that I believe it is similar districts, but I will have more information for you on that. I mean, they, they did look at the district data in aggregate. So I believe it is more District 58 compared to other districts in the country. They simply term it a similar schools study.
Okay. And then a question about how this data is used at the most granular levels, right? The building level, the teacher level and this families level? I think one of the benefits of MAP data is that it provides domain level data at, for reading and domain level data for math, right? So you can get, for example, for math, you can get measurement and data scores. You can get geometry scores. You can get numbers and operations score. How do we use that domain level data? At what point is that not communicated out? So I'm, I'm, are buildings seeing domain level data within MAP? Are teachers seeing domain level data within MAP? And are families seeing, here's how my student did in geometry compared to numbers and operations?
So our buildings and teachers looking at it, yes, they are. Again, like we, we looked primarily at, at some tier one information, you know, with those data meetings that we just had, but they are able to look at those different levels. And teachers will and have, and certainly have in the past, looked at in math, for example, the unit that is upcoming. And rather than looking simply at overall rate scores, looking at some of those subdomains and trying to figure out groupings and things like that. So that, that is used. There is a reference to it in the student progress report. It is not a detailed reference in terms of what is sent home to families. So there, you know, in terms, there are, there are certainly other reports that are there. So families have a cursory view of that. Teachers are looking more at some of the specific ranges within those, those subdomains to make those instructional decisions.
I'd love, maybe our curriculum workshop coming up, I'd love to get a lens into, we do standards-based reporting, right? We have domain level testing data. I'd love to understand how are we empowering our families at home to know, here's where your student is doing really well and what to encourage? And here's where your student is struggling. And as a parent, the thing that's most helpful for me is to know, is my, is my student struggling with, you know, their multiplication? Or are they struggling with, you know, shapes and geometry, right? In order to be most helpful at home, especially in a time where instructional time in schools is, is limited, I think that level of granularity, whether it's through our standards-based reporting report card or through the tests and the domain level data that we have, I'd love a perspective on how do we empower families to have that type of access? And empower them to then take that type of action?
Yeah, I think that's, that's a great question. And the other thing I would suggest is that a lot of that does also happen through the parent-teacher conferences, maybe in a, in a data-driven from the background way, but a much more user-friendly manner in those conversations. You know, years back when we surveyed families about reporting mechanisms, that those conferences are really one of the most valuable places where you have the chance to ask the questions that you are asking directly to the teachers. So I think we do communicate it in that way, but, but tying it back to some of the more formal reporting is, is something we can talk more about for sure.
Sounds good. Thanks, Justin.
So I guess Kevin, how do you kind of view us being more educated around kind of the activities between now and the curriculum workshop, right? We've got six weeks. And I don't know, I just feel like whenever this time comes up, I feel like I'm, I'm wanting more, right? Like I want more time dedicated to this or, or more information or more ways of slicing and dicing the data. I guess, you know, we got six weeks between now and the curriculum workshop. What sort of information are we going to kind of be fed? Are we just going to kind of get a slide deck the night of the curriculum workshop?
I mean, and this is where I'd be asking for guidance from, from the membership. But what I'm hearing right now is really a desire from the board to move off of the macro level and learn more about the micro level in terms of what this looks like for individual students. And then how can we report that out not only to the, the classroom teachers, but also to the families at home? And so as I'm sitting here taking notes, that's what I'm pulling away from this conversation. And, you know, what we can bring back at the curriculum workshop to kind of demonstrate to the board in terms of, you know, growth and achievement, how that gets, you know, to the families? And then what are we going to do about students that may be falling behind? And that's where I think you heard some of the work about summer school and other areas. But certainly that's one of my takeaways that, that the board would like to see a little bit more information on. How are we using that school improvement process to drive that at the individual level of the children? Unless I'm misinterpreting that, but that certainly is, is one of the things that I'm pulling out. Did that get to your question, Steve?
Yeah, I guess, you know, the way I look at it is, is we kind of always start at the high level and we say, you know, we're going to go to the building and then come back, right? And I just, I just want to kind of just have that open discussion here tonight. You know, what, what's going to come back after those building conversations? Cause you know, the conversation takes place, maybe the output is nothing, right? Like, you know, we reviewed it and we did nothing. But I guess I, you know, as being a board member for two years, I'm still not getting a good appreciation for what those actions and conversations are at the building level, translated back to the administration and the...
Yeah. I, what I, what I, what I think we can, we can certainly present and even build up to a little bit through some board communication is just kind of a walkthrough of, because a lot of the things you're asking about actually have happened in individual buildings over the past few weeks where teams, grade level teams of teachers have pulled those reports. The Karat was mentioning to look at all those different things. And, and we've got actually a, a series of questions that each grade level team has asked and worked through in terms of, you know, some of the guiding questions when you look at that data. And then we can look at some of the outcomes. I mean, obviously we're going to have to be careful when we start to talk about individual students or groups. But I think I can certainly walk you through, here is the process that has been taking place. And then over the, and then here are the results in terms of what now starts to look different for group of students A or individual students B and C as a result of those conversations. So we, we do have that. And I, I think I can certainly, again, on a, on a regular board meeting, we typically haven't gone that granular. But I think the curriculum workshop and some, some upcoming moments would be a fine time to walk through all of that. Cause we, that, that work actually is the result of the differentiation and assessment committee, which is a district-wide committee of teachers over the past couple of years, really working to refine some of those processes as we look at data.
Justin, so is there, obviously you kind of already said, there are groups of teachers who have already taken some time to look on a more micro level at their particular class's scores and say, okay, you know, 50% of these students struggled in geometric shapes.
Yes.
And so potentially that is a gap or a hole that needs to be filled. And we're going to address that in the third trimester with X, Y, Z. Or we're going to pass that on to the next year's team of teachers to say, this might need to be revisited a little bit additionally, et cetera. Like those types of conversations are already happening or will be happening continually throughout the rest of the school year. I think that's sort of the specifics that some people are kind of looking for, like our...
Yeah, I guess I would kind of like, you know, once again, I'm very needy. You guys all know that.
You know, it's good.
But like, if we kind of fast forward to your and said, hey, you know, what did we do with, with the 2021 winter dataset? And we could say, hey, in Pierce Downer Grade Two, this was the data review. And these were the insights drawn and these were the actions taken. You know, that doesn't, we don't have to go through every single class and cohort to that level. But I would kind of like to be able to, if needed, go back and say, hey, this, this, these were the scores. This is the, the scatter plot for, for that particular cohort. This was the conversation on these dates. The committee said, hey, we're going to take these actions. And then come back a year later and say, hey, you know, was that successful or not? That, that's kind of what I'm selfishly looking for.
No, and I'm happy to share more of the process. To your question, Emily, yes. I was, I got a text two hours ago from a principal who, who shared some details about one of the data meetings and some of the next steps they were taking. So it is actively happening. This is a faculty meeting week for our teachers. So at some buildings, it'll be happening this week if it hasn't already happened. So I think we, we really do have, you know, we can, we can certainly begin with summarizing some of that. And then perhaps in March, we can literally walk through with an example team. Here's what happened. Here are some of the kinds of conversations that occurred. And then here are some of the steps by then, like you said, that are already in place as a result of those conversations.
I was going to say, there could be hundreds of ways that the data is used on an individual student versus a group of five students versus an entire class or every secondary class across the district. It's so specific. You said something that, you know, the, the, the scores are specific to the individual student and so is the, the, the way that we use the data. And so it's hard to, I understand what you're asking for, but I think that can be challenging unless you're literally looking for like a list of every, you know what I mean?
So I think one of the things that...
The overall picture versus like every, like maybe you, you said some, like a smattering of examples of different ways to kind of show this is sort of how it's being demonstrated across the district.
If we begin kind of with the, here is, here is what every, here are the, the parameters that happened at every grade. Here are the, here's what they looked at. Here are the questions that were asked. Here are the outcomes that were asked for. And then we can look a little more specifically at a couple of samples as what are some of those potential outcomes of those conversations? How are they applied to teaching?
So Justin, can, look, I'm very proud of the work that happened as part of the strategic plan a couple of years ago. But I think that some of what's going on right now is, is give us, given us some peek into some of the weaknesses, maybe in the way we always assess our data and set some of our KPIs. And we've talked about how do we improve these? So I, you know, and, and member Weiner can, can chime in at some point here on whether she sees it the same way. But I think in DLT, we might want to look at a little bit about how we assess some of the stuff and look at it. Cause for me, I, I, one of the things that is in the right direction, it was slide number 20, and it's that, the four quadrants in the points. Because to me, if I've got a fifth grader that came in with a reading level of first grade and comes out with a reading level at third grade, that means more to me than a fourth grader that had a seventh grade reading level and still is at seventh grade reading level at the end of the year. We're showing really high achievement there, but not necessarily the, and so we might have some people that are low achieving, but we as a district have been very successful in, in helping them provide growth. And I think one of the challenges in the data that we look at, and, and this goes back to the question that Steve had regarding where we saw the one. So if, if they scored a 214 last time and this time we had an expectation they would score a 222 and they scored a 221, they didn't hit their mark, right? And so sometimes I think it would benefit us to look at some things, not always in the percentiles, but naturally in, in some of the raw data. Cause I kind of picture this as a bell curve, right? A lot of the people kind of here in the middle. But are our tails on either end separating? Do we have a lot of people, or, you know, or is it getting more weighted, you know, on, on one under the other? I would, I would love to know, are, you know, are we leaving people behind? Are our high achievers growing a lot less than they used to? But looking at it maybe in ways, not just in comparative to national norms, but just in how they're doing in raw numbers. Maybe that's not how we always want to look at it. Because I think a big question for me is, when we have kids entering seventh grade next year, are we, are they where we expect a seventh grader to be? What percentage of them are ready to be sitting in a seventh grade classroom? I think is, is a lot of what we do. And I want to celebrate where we're having high growth. And I don't know, that one could be very, very telling. Or if we had a majority of kids just miss it by a hair, then, then we're actually having a very, very successful year. Or did we have people, so when we aggregate, I think always on those percentiles, I don't know that that necessarily is giving us the most accurate view. I, I like those normally and when we look at the angle. But when we're looking at purely on medians and purely on, on how our, our comparative scores and just hitting the goals, is it telling us that whole story? So I, I would love maybe in, in DLT, and I don't know if Tracy has any kind of, kind of, are there ways that we can really show things like those, those scatter points there on that, that, that grid that are showing us where our concerns are? Do we have certain grades where we have a lot of people low achieving and low growth? Because that obviously is our low hanging fruit that we have to take care of. We want everybody to be in that high achieving and high growth, but in reality, we're not going to always be there. But how do we get everybody to at least a period of, of high growth? So that, that we can do our jobs here in this district? The educators are here to educate. And, and I think that gives us a better view in, on some of the successes that are happening that we don't always see, especially between one school to the other. I think that's a much more equitable view in some ways, especially with the challenges that we're facing right now. And I think helps maybe along Steve's point of showing us opportunities that we've identified low achievement, low growth and taken those and taking the opportunity. I don't necessarily need to get to the granular level and maybe some other people want it of, we had these in this classroom or that. But like, how many people did we have falling into these quadrants? And how many people did we move out of that quadrant? Would be really powerful for me. I don't know what the kind of, the, the assessment is here from the rest of the board, but that's where I was coming at it from.
And just to jump in, because I've had, you know, several conversations with board members throughout my tenure about, you know, we'd like to see this or we'd like to see that. And I think one of the challenging things for us as school administrators is we've got a strategic plan of which focus on learning is a major component, right? It's one of the, the three pillars of our strategic plan. And in that, it calls for data to be reported out in a certain fashion, right? With the key performance indicators. And so one of the, the conversations that I've had with, with several individuals is, you know, the DLT is the proper place to kind of filter. know, the DLT is the proper place to kind of filter through if we want to see this data perhaps adjusted, if we want to see this data presented in a different way. That's a great tool at our disposal to use, because then we come back, and you've got board representation on that committee, and then we can come back and present the data in a manner at which the board wants to see it. One of the things we're always hesitant to do is just completely change the approach, because that strategic plan was written by the community and has been, you know, really embraced by our community. But times definitely changed, board members changed, preferences changed in how we want to see that. But certainly, one of the themes that we can talk about at the DLT, and I think it's a very important piece to talk about, is how does this play out at the individual child? Or how does this play out with the individual child or student? And how are we going to grow and achieve? And that is certainly something that I think, you know, we can bring back to the DLT, and I know we can bring back to the DLT with some good suggestions in terms of what that looks like, bounce that back off of the board, and then by the time we get to that curriculum workshop, six weeks later, really not only present another way of looking at the data, but show the board what actionable steps we've taken based on the data that we get. The one caution I would give the board and the community is each one of these data points and map testing is a snapshot in time. And so we look at this as data in, data out constantly, and we're churning through that data. We don't take it and pause and say, okay, now we're just going to react to this data set. It's ever flowing, data in, data out as we go through this process. And, but I certainly think we can have a really robust conversation based on this conversation with the district leadership team and internally as administrators with our principals and talk about what that can look like when we come back to the curriculum committee.
So Steve, as I'm thinking about your, your comments, and I'm reflecting on them, I know that you and I, and the whole board, but you and I have had a couple of conversations on, on a time together on this board about accountability. We've always been of the mind that, you know, our job as a whole, Kevin, is to the opposite highs and standards, and that our expectation is that he'll do the same for his, his administrative team, and then his administrative team will do that for their staffs at the building level. And I just can't think of a better way to kind of create that culture of accountability by stressing this, this data piece. And where do we want them to be accountable to? We want them to be accountable to outcomes and to student data. So by, by, you know, creating the expectation that the board is becoming more keenly interested in, in data, not just like at this very high level, but, and not that we're going to get into the minutia either, but just creating that expectation that the board is keenly interested, and it's not just something that we want, that, you know, we want, we want to get away from any, you know, history of just kind of looking at data and admiring it and moving on, but making sure that, that teams of teachers, administrators are looking at the data, analyzing what it means, making decisions based on that data, implementing changes, and then constantly like reassessing and making, and tweaking as they go along, rather than just, and that's, that's how you're going to have, that's how you're going to implement change, that's how you're going to have the greatest impact on kids.
Yeah, I guess, you know, to just kind of add on to that, I, you know, Kevin, your point about, we don't want to change anything, right? I think the, the goals are the goals, right? Like, we don't want to change the goals, but I think the, the time where we pause after we get some results, and all the work that we are doing at the, the building level, I guess, I just think that can be more visible to just kind of, you know, me, my role as a board member, I just want to make sure that that's being done for each and every student, each, every single cohort, you know, in the classroom. And if I were to ask for that in six weeks, would I have that objective evidence that that level of review is done for each and every single student within the district?
Yes. And I think that, and I really do appreciate, you know, when you talk about data, there are, there's a myriad of ways to present it and a myriad of ways to analyze it. And so hearing the questions that you have help us then through district leadership team and then through eventual presentations to figure out how and what we need to present to answer those questions. So, I mean, yes, Steve, I could show you within a week the processes that have gone through, and then weeks later, the changes that have been implemented. So like we said, we can, we can certainly bring a lot of that back, but I think it will be kind of synthesizing this list of questions to make sure that we have a clear understanding of what the board is looking for and then moving forward with that.
And I for one welcome conversations like these. I think I speak for the entire administrative team when we're so thrilled to be talking about students and instruction, you know? What are charges in a school district versus, you know, vaccinations and six feet and all those things? That's not important, safety is first, but, you know, all this work is taking place in our school district, and I think how we highlight that work, number one, I know you'll be impressed, is a board of education, but it's what's driving us, it's what we're supposed to be doing. How do we drill down to the individual level and make sure that we're impacting all 5,000 of our students? And so I think we welcome these conversations. I think we're looking for your feedback as we share this. We're happy to bounce off ideas and meet with members individually as we get closer to that, because we want to present the data in a meaningful way that can be digested by the board, that we can get good feedback to drive that continuous improvement cycle. That's what we're supposed to be doing, and we certainly welcome that. Hasn't always obviously been presented in that manner, but that doesn't mean that we can't. And I agree, Steve, we shouldn't be changing the overall overarching goals, but how we let the community and the board see how we get there on the individual level is important in getting that feedback from all of you in terms of, yes, this is what we're looking for, and no, that's not what we're looking for. To highlight that, I think, is very important for us.
All right. Well, I know we got a lot of agenda topics, but I will make myself available at any time to kind of, you know, continue this conversation, because I think it's, to Greg's point and my fellow board members' point, I think it's a very important topic, and now we're getting back to talking about kids instead of health and safety.
And one of the goals that we're having as an administrative team is, you know, for obvious reasons, a lot of the conversations that are taking place in our schools aren't necessarily starting with, with students, because we're in the middle of a pandemic, we're trying to figure all this stuff out. But that is definitely the shift and where we want to get back to very quickly is, all of our conversations are starting with children, and we're talking about growth and achievement, and that's where we want to be as a school district.
This conversation, I'm excited that we're not talking about anything but students right now, because this is, this is, I think, why all of us serve on the board. When we look at this kind of data, I think, as a board, we often will make asks for, we want to see this, we want to see that. There's a ton of value in what you're already delivering, and it helps us understand where as a board can we weigh in and provide value, generally in terms of direction. And so let me just kind of like share a bit of a takeaway from what we're seeing on this slide. There's, there's a few key trends. I think Darren, your story about students with low achievement, high growth, I think is a great story, but that's just not the reality of our district right now. That top left quadrant is the slimmest of all our quadrants. So as a board, here's, here's a couple of takeaways. One, we have strong performance at almost every grade level in high achievement and high growth. That's the highest concentration.
In one building? This is, this is-
Is this just one building?
This is one, this is a sample of one building, yes.
I see, okay. Here's the type of takeaway that I would, I would draw from this in that case. One is high achievement, high growth. Two is, our second most populated quadrant in this case is high achievement, low growth. And so that makes me question, what are we as a board doing in terms of direction around enrichment? What type of enrichment programs do we put in place? How do we do those? And why aren't they working? Because they're clearly the second biggest populated one in this particular school. The third takeaway I have is, while we don't have a ton of students that are having low achievement, high growth, there are cases where that is happening. And that's the place where I'd love to hear, I think this is to Steve's point, when this data is being used, how is it being used at the individual student, individual classroom level, right? So at an individual classroom level or individual student level, what led to an individual student that had a low achievement in a particular term to achieve high growth? And how do we unpack that so we can try to replicate that for other students that might be in a similar situation? I know two students are the same, but that's the level of detail that I think, we won't be able to hear about all 5,000 of our students, but those are the flavors of things that I'd like to be able to hear that we're seeing, not in the highest performing classes in our district, but the critical mass of classrooms and the critical mass of buildings in our district. And those are the conversations, the level of detail in which we're using this data to identify what we can specifically do at each of our roles. And that includes us as a board, right? What can we do to set a tone for enrichment's a problem, and we need to figure out a way to fix it? Or low achievement, high growth is a problem, and we need to help set direction for what we want to be investing in curriculum going forward.
Very valid point, but, and that's what I was getting at, this tells me a story that a lot of those other things don't show me. We obviously want to move everyone to the right side of the screen and, and to the top side of the screen, right? That's our goal. So how, every school might look a little bit different, and what challenges are we facing, and how do we move people into that direction? That, and if I see an improvement from what fourth grade looks like this year and what fifth grade looks like next year, that's very, very powerful to me on what we're achieving in this district. I can't, I can't just measure on, on numbers, because we could be missing enrichment opportunities, we could be ignoring the fact that we have low, low achievement, but we're doing an incredible amount of growth, because maybe we had some students transfer in, and we're doing tremendous work in getting them caught up, but it's not showing, or, or we're hiding the fact that some of our really academically gifted students are not, are not growing at the level they need to. So I, I really, I really like this. It tells me a real story.
We can absolutely dig in. I think the reminder is that the true story is in the time lapsed version of these charts and not in any one, right? So before, we would draw a conclusion based on one. I mean, Corral, your inferences are, are right on with some of the things we're seeing here. I would want to put this same school, fall, winter, spring, last winter, you know, and really take a look at, to your point, Darren, how is it moving? That's, that I think is, is what I'm hearing that we're looking for as a board, and I think we can certainly start to present those kinds of, really looking at these things both in a moment and then over time at a much more specific level.
All right, one, one last comment before I shut up. But I, but I think that, you know, the data speaks for itself, and we could, you know, create any visualization we want, and I think that would be phenomenal, but I still want to hear the stories. You know, what did that second grade teacher, you know, based on their interpretation of the data at the student level, the classroom level, what were the actions they took? And then, you know, what was the principal, their interpretation of the data across all grades in their building, and what actions did they take? So those three things put together would be a complete picture.
I am going to go back and listen to the audio of the meeting, type up all the questions, and get ready for what's coming in. Because I want to make sure we get it.
And I do want to remind everybody, we have a district leadership team meeting on the 22nd prior to our, our special meeting, so hopefully we can kind of continue some of this dialogue in that meeting. But I, I appreciate you giving us a snapshot here a month early, since we did have to postpone it from later this month to later next month. It was a, it was a good insight. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Justin.
Thank you.
All right, listed on tonight's agenda are 15 communications received by the board. Are there any additional communications board members would like to share at this time? I actually did want to take a moment and note that we did receive three communications after the cutoff or when we put them on the agenda, all regarding a desire to increase the time that our kids are at school. I did want to take a moment to note it, because I think later on in the meeting today, we're going to have a little bit of a dialogue around it, and sort of the future of what school is going to look like is going to be the focus of that meeting on the 22nd, and this would not appear on the agenda until our March 6th meeting. And so I will respond to each of those people that replied to us as, as we regularly do. But I did want to take a moment and note that we know about that, and we are starting, we're hearing your voices as we're going into these conversations, and didn't, didn't want to leave that until the, to the March meeting. So those are there. All right, we have some reports to the board now. We'll go ahead and start off with the superintendent report with Dr. Russell.
Thank you. Well, first, I'd like to, once again, thank, on behalf of the Board of Education, Leland Wagner, Lori Smith, the students, and the Pierce Downer PTA for a great presentation. It's always challenging when you're doing it in person and virtual at the same time, but we're very proud of all 13 of our schools, and we thoroughly enjoy those board presentations. It gives us a really good view of what's taking place in our schools. For those who are looking out or listening in the audience, when, when they said seven sections of kindergarten, they're correct, but I do want to, you know, have to explain that a little bit. We have Lester and Pierce Downer together this year. We have a half-day program this year because of the pandemic. There's more space over at Pierce Downer, and so they've done a great job of incorporating Lester, blending them into the Pierce Downer community, but also keeping that Lester identity as well. And so kudos to both the Lester and Pierce Downer staff for working together this year under extraordinary circumstances to make that all work. We're very proud of everything that's going on at all of our schools, but tonight, we focus on Pierce Downer. And, you know, what a first year for our new principal, but you're doing very good, Mr. Wagner, and thank you for all of your community building efforts at Pierce Downer. They're noticed and appreciated. Curriculum and instruction. I'd like to remind all families and staff that there will be a special meeting and instructional workshop at O'Neill Middle School on Monday, February 22nd at 7:00 PM. We've been talking a lot about that. The previously scheduled curriculum workshop for that evening will be moved to March. The purpose of the special meeting on the 22nd is to discuss with the board the district's learning model and ideas on how we can move forward with increasing the student day, both in-person and live remote instruction. This will be a great chance for a robust conversation around that topic. Over the past week, I've received several communications from families asking why the district is waiting to implement a full day, five day a week schedule for students. Throughout the pandemic, we've seen different viewpoints from community members about wanting to be fully remote, and now we're starting to see on the other end of it, wanting to be full-time, five days a week. I would like to remind everyone in the community that the administration and board listened very carefully to the feedback that we received in the December survey about the desire to avoid too much change, given all the parameters that we're facing in the regulations. Last month, at the January board meeting, the team discussed at length its desire to increase the student day. However, we also discussed that there are several obstacles that need to be addressed prior to making any changes. Some of the obstacles include, but are not limited to, getting staff vaccinated, space concerns due to the social distancing guidelines of six feet, lunch, community transmission levels, and avoiding, to the greatest extent possible, teacher changes and disruptions to student schedules. The administration will discuss all of these topics on February 22nd. I'd also like to remind the community that Mr. Sissel and other administrators are heading up working groups, talking with all of the different grade levels about these obstacles and how they might be overcome. Finally, I'd like to highlight that District 58 has been a leader in terms of in-person instruction, thanks to the hard work and dedication of our board and community. When most districts close during the fall and winter, we stayed the course because we believe a robust in-person option is what's best for kids. We will continue to advocate for in-person instruction, but several factors play into increasing the day, and everything must be carefully planned. In terms of finance for this board meeting, I'd like to congratulate Assistant Superintendent Todd Dreifall on being named to the Illinois Association of Chief School Business Officials' Board of Directors. This is a very big honor, and we're very happy for Todd. We're also excited that District 58 will have a seat at the table as important financial conversations take place throughout the state of Illinois. Congratulations, Todd. For facilities, this is timely, given the weather that we're experiencing outside. The district continues to focus on heat in the buildings during the winter months, and especially this week. To date, we've had major heat issues at both middle schools, Fairmount and Lester, and currently, as I speak to you, we're dealing with an issue at Whittier. These have all caused prolonged shutdowns of some of our buildings. While the heat is working at all the schools, our outdated infrastructure is something that needs to be constantly monitored and addressed. As we prepare to once again move forward with our master facilities plan, this will be a major component of the many recommended replacements to our district's infrastructure. In the public relations section, I'd like to address vaccines. I've received several questions from the staff and community regarding COVID-19 vaccinations. While the majority of the questions have centered on wanting to learn more about the District 99 Consortium, we received all sorts of questions in terms of, when are we vaccinating seniors? How is this working? Why have some other districts got it? I want to remind everyone, and I'm not trying to be flip here, we are a school district, we are not in charge of vaccinating our community, we want to be an active partner in that, but we're getting many questions at the district office that really are better suited for the DuPage County Health Department or the Illinois Department of Public Health. Many have even criticized the district for not vaccinating all staff members to date. Prior to explaining exactly what we're doing as a district, I'd like to highlight that there is a shortage of vaccine and a tremendous demand for the shots. This demand is causing many to have to wait much longer than they had hoped to obtain the vaccine. In January, school districts in DuPage County were directed to partner with their neighboring districts that feed into a high school district. Therefore, the District 99 Consortium was formed. We were then told to partner with a private third party to administer the shots. To date, the consortium has had conversations with four private partners, including Walgreens and Osco. I continue to get emails saying, Kevin, you need to call Walgreens or you need to call Osco. I want to assure everyone in the community, I have called every pharmacy and major hospital in the area and I will continue to do so. While I am aware that some districts have received their shots, there are several districts, including ours, that have not received any mass shots. The District 99 Consortium has done everything we were supposed to do and we are ready to go at a moment's notice. We have been told that we are in line and now we are waiting our turn to go. We have a date set for February 20th and I sincerely hope that the DuPage County Health Department will fill the order as scheduled. Please understand that the lack of vaccines administered in the consortium is not due to a lack of partnerships or planning. It is due to a shortage of vaccines. It's all about supply and demand. I understand it's frustrating, there is no one more frustrated than me. We will continue to advocate for our staff members and hope that the supply will increase soon. In terms of personnel, the search for a new principal for Lester School is underway due to the retirement of Principal Karen Novak. Definitely is bittersweet whenever you have a principal retiring, but we are excited to begin the process and the search for a new principal. The administration and a team of stakeholders from the school will complete three rounds of interviews and will likely make a recommendation to the board at the March 8th meeting, so that's a month from today. In terms of technology, the technology department just concluded supporting NWA testing in our schools and we are now moving forward to prepare for state testing, including IAR, DLM, access and the Illinois Science Test. Preparation for these tests include reviewing guidance from ISBE, ensuring rosters and accommodations are correct and assessing student devices for readiness. The technology department is also preparing for parent teacher conference registration, which will begin next week. We'll be using the Power School Parent Portal again, which was the system we used in the fall for the first time. Student services. Want to remind our families that Grove Children's Preschool is now accepting tuition applications for next school year. The Grove Preschool is an award-winning preschool program located at Henry Puffer and Indian Trail and serves children ages three through five who live within our boundaries. First priority registration is due Tuesday, February 16th. Having been through the preschool registration process many times as a parent, I can tell you, get on that if you're listening because you don't want to miss out. Just some other quick reminders, President's Day, I can't believe how fast the year is already going, is next Monday, so we'll be off school. The County Light Institute Day is February 26th. It's also hard to believe that we're approaching the 100th Day of School. This is a big deal at all 11 of our elementary schools and we'll continue to celebrate the 100th Day of School. I encourage everyone to check that out on Twitter and Facebook and follow our hashtag DG58pride. That concludes the superintendent's report. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Russell. I just, I want to take a moment and reiterate that you've been calling me for several weeks now. I think you've learned more about the vaccination process than you ever cared to know, so I do want to, I do just want to reassure everybody how on top of it you and your administrative team have been and I want to thank you for that. Yes, I wish we had our staff fully vaccinated already, but everybody does and I just want to say how hard I know you're working and I just want everyone else to know that as well.
And the other point I want to make, and first of all, thank you for that. In terms of vaccinations, we've got a great partnership. We work very well with the District 99 Consortium, but when you start to put these big school districts together, then on one hand, it's very nice for the health department and others to come in because they can get a lot of people done at once. The problem is the bigger you are, the harder you have in terms of securing, or the harder time you have in terms of securing vaccine. That's why you see District 204, District 203, us, we're struggling to get that final appointment, but we will keep at it. The other thing that we are also doing in terms of vaccination is any side groups that we can get vaccines from, we will start to send targeted staff to those groups. So we've got an example of a very small group this week, we're working on another small group next week, and we'll continue to do that even piecemeal until we get everybody there.
One other statement I want to make and the rest of the board may have some questions is going into February 22nd, this is coming up close to the beginning of the third trimester. And so one of the things that I would be asking for as a member of the board is as we lead up into that meeting is to make sure that we're getting as much data and information to the board as possible so that we can be prepared to go into that meeting and help make a decision for us to move forward for the remainder of the year. I would hate for our students to miss out on opportunity because we ran out of time, you know, the clock ran out and so we end up having to do just the best of what's available in that moment as opposed to, you know, have the most amount of opportunity at our fingertips to get things done. So anything you can do to make sure that we can have as much data leading into that meeting on the 22nd as possible would be, I know greatly appreciated by me and I assume the rest of the board. Any other questions or comments for Kevin?
I'll ask a couple, just as we think about return to learn, we're at an interesting spot now than we were seven, eight months ago. Seven, eight months ago, we were at a spot of how do we do school, right? How do we do school in a world where a pandemic has hit our district and hit the world? Now we're in an interesting spot of we hopefully can start to see lights at the end of the tunnel and, you know, knock on wood, that continues to stay true. As we think about our return to learn for the remainder of this year and especially as we go into Fall '21, I'd love to get a sense for what are we as a board hoping to accomplish by the end of this year? Provide Kevin and his team some direction around, when they come back to us with their return to learn plan or a skeleton of a plan on the 22nd, what type of guidance do we give on what the goal is? Just to give folks a framing, one of the things I think we have an opportunity to do right now is we can either stay the course, which has a ton of benefits to it, right? The hybrid and fully remote option available to the vast majority of our students provides a level of consistency through the rest of this school year for a lot of our families and community. What that also then does is puts a lot of uncertainty on the table for the summer on what school will look like in the fall. Will it continue to remain in that hybrid fashion? Will we have an opportunity to expand the school day? Will we be able to do meals? As one voice on the board, what I'd be interested in seeing as a return to learn plan or the skeleton of a plan is how do we take some of that potential learning for what it's like to get back into a longer school day, get back into doing snacks or meals inside the buildings? What can we do this school year to be able to experiment and figure that out so that we can point to evidence and say, here's what worked, here's what didn't work, here's now the summer to be able to pick back up and plan for the areas that didn't work? So we're hitting the ground running in the fall versus, I imagine the alternative is a lot of anxiety in parents' minds on what will school look like, what won't it look like versus being able to feel it, touch it and feel the pain points and also the gain points from having done it this school year. That'd be my hope, is that we have some chance this school year to test out a plan if all parties can agree on it and it passes the sniff test around, you know, health and safety primarily. But I'd look for, I think as a board, we provide Kevin and his team direction on what are the things we're looking for on the 22nd and going forward in terms of return to learn? And Kevin, maybe what else you might be asking for in terms of guidance from us?
No, I think it certainly is helpful as we talk with staff and as we, you know, start to talk about not only what the remainder of this school year is going to look like, but what, you know, fall should look like in terms of your priorities as a board of education in terms of, you know, what you would like to see. And what I mean by priorities, you know, we're talking about is a priority to minimize disruptions for students and keep the school day as similar as it is? Is the priority to increase the school day and try and get as many hours as we possibly can? I think that certainly can help the planning process as we move forward.
I'm glad we're having this conversation. The conversation is shifting from where it was a long time ago and this kind of builds on what Karat was saying in that we're starting to see a light at the end of the tunnel and the question that I was getting asked before was to justify why we should be allowing children to be in school. And I'm getting the opposite question now. They're asking me what's preventing us from being full-time? And that mindset, that shift of what our baseline is, which every year is to provide an education from approximately 8:00 AM to approximately 3:00 PM, is beginning to resurface as our norm. So to piggyback on what Karat was saying is I have a real desire personally to see us get as close to the level of normalcy we can before the end of this year, because I am a big believer in if we can solve many of these problems and have a strong showing of what school looks like, close to normal, that does alleviate a significant amount of stress on our staff, on our families, on our students of what next year can look like. Obviously, you want to make sure it's worthwhile. I don't want to extend the day by 45 minutes to add a 30-minute lunch because I don't get a net value out of that. But if I can extend the school day by several hours, it's worth having the kids eat lunch in the building, it's worth having maybe a slight adjustment to what their day looks like or which teachers they're seeing at what time. Obviously, I personally would like to see us minimize any impact, but it's always a cost-benefit analysis for me. If I can get our kids in our buildings with a higher level of normalcy, that is something that I can get behind as long as we can functionally make it happen. And part of that might mean we have to, we do want to make sure that we're aligning with the trimester and how do we make that work in a way that we're not making one change and then a couple of weeks later, we're kind of jerking things around? Even if things can't all happen at once, how do we put it on a scale where it just slides along without having a big impact? So let's set up a plan that, that once we start implementing it, is a clean process all the way through, I would say, so that every three weeks, we're not feeling some kind of major shift in creating anxiety in that way is where my approach is coming from.
I'll just, I'll be brief. I'll just say that my interests are with the kids and what's best by the kids and what's in the best interest of the individual learner and as groups. I feel like we've achieved a lot this year and I'm pretty proud of the work we've done and we've, we're pretty close to getting over two major hurdles. The first one would be just getting the community welcomed to the idea of having schools open and getting over like the apprehension they have of taking their kids and dropping them off at school in the morning. We've proven since October that we can have kids in school safely and I think most people in the community see that. And the next big hurdle that we are pretty close to surmounting is vaccines. And, you know, we've always had, we've always talked about our 58 family, we want, how we want to take care of our staff and we don't want to put anybody in harm's way. But if we get that taken care of, you know, I want to, you know, I still think we need to emphasize safety and I know we need to minimize disruptions, but in terms of putting kids first, putting them at the center of conversation, what's best for them? And I believe that getting them back in the classrooms to the best, with the maximum of time in a safe way is what our focus should be.
I think there's a couple of things that are important, at least for me, for the next upcoming meeting or two, when they're going to be, we'll be discussing this further. But I think, I think the vaccine issue is obviously paramount. Our staff has to not only be safe, but feel safe to be in the classrooms and I think that's key. But I also think a part of that, that I don't think can, I don't think we can just completely ignore is the fact that the kids will not be vaccinated. And so I, in my view, and again, we'll have to kind of wait and see what these new CDC roll out of recommendations and things like that will be, but some level of social distancing will still be required in the classrooms. And so what will that look like for District 58 in particular in terms of how are we, you know, if we're talking about extending the school day further? Can we still do that in a feasible manner with social distancing requirements in place? And most importantly, what impact will that have on our class groupings, our teachers and things like that? One of the loud and clear things we heard from the surveys, especially the most recent surveys done to staff and to families, was that change, the continuous change or the multiple large changes throughout the school year were the most challenging part of any of this and that if their child's teacher had to change, it was extremely disruptive. If their child's schedule had to change, it was extremely disruptive, things like that. And so I think, at least for me, in terms of my decision-making process moving forward, that will be a huge factor in how I move forward with the decision of extending the school day or not extending the school day. What kind of an impact will that have on our class groupings and how many students would be impacted with a significant change to their teacher, to their class grouping and things like that? I think that's important. I think consistency for the rest of the school year is pretty important. I see what you're saying about establishing some potential routines and things like that moving into the fall for next year and how kind of creating that sense of quote unquote "normalcy" could be helpful in moving forward, but I also am concerned about another, what I would consider to be sort of a drastic change for our students, for our teachers, for our families, causing a lot of stress. And like someone else said, is the reward worth that? And that will be kind of what I'm most looking at going forward with this decision, so.
I think what I was gonna name Emily on the point of, is it worth it? Nothing is normal this year, but I think one thing that's been really helpful is we've gotten into a, I think most would believe that we've gotten into a routine in the buildings, on the schedules and the rhythms and whatnot, but we're in February. And maybe in December or so is when families started to feel like they were getting there. And that took three to four months of some remote time, some hybrid time, to understand what an AM/PM schedule looked like, to opt into particular surveys and figure that out. The reason I advocate for, even if it creates some minor disruptions, and I don't want to, I don't want to put a number on it, I don't want to suggest that any disruption is okay, the amount of learning we can do this year, I advocate for it being better because it takes months to get into routines. The more time you have to plan, the faster that runway is, the shorter the time it takes to get into those routines from my perspective. But again, I defer to the experts on this. And so that's why I would advocate for, because it took a few months for us to figure out what a good system looked like this year. And I'd hate for us to think about the next school year and say, the first three months, first trimester are going to be a learning period and then we can start to get into routine and then we can do X. It's all a matter of balance and I'd like to be able to use this year as a learning year.
So I would agree in the fact that, not only from a learning perspective, but from a mental perspective and anxiety perspective, all of those kind of things, this year has been rough and no year in the future, and I'm looking for Justin as well on this because I feel like we're beating the poor guy up here this year, is we're expect, we really expected a level of agility that is not normal inside the world of education. And we may be coming forward again and asking to yet be agile in this world and it's not where I want to be, but I think in the long run, there's a payoff. So I'm hoping that we can get there and I'm hoping we can get to the payoff. And I think as a reminder, a lot of our, a lot of our students handle change a lot better than we do as parents and as teachers and as other members in the building, the administration. I think some of that is harder on us. And so to Greg's point, if we can really provide something great for our students and it's something that our families are willing to send their kids into, I think it is our duty to provide that if it's possible. So I hope that we can find a good plan that houses the least amount of disruption for the highest amount of benefit. And I'm looking forward, and that's why I'm hoping to see some of that data leading up to it so that we can potentially, you know, respond to you and provide some feedback as individuals so that we can hone in on something as we move into that meeting.
Can I ask, is there any other opportunities between now, potentially in whatever, we would be making this decision for the remainder of the school year or whatever course in the school year, for feedback from families, from staff in terms of what they would sort of prefer? Would they, how would they prioritize teacher change versus more in-person time, et cetera? And, you know, for staff and for families, are we going to be getting any more information on that before we decide?
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great question and I'm actually really glad this came up because that is something that we are considering and will likely move forward with as an administrative team in terms of priorities. I think we have to be careful not to predetermine the plans and predetermine the work of our working groups by asking specific questions about models because quite frankly, we've been very clear with our staff that there are no predetermined outcomes. We want to hear from them. We want to make sure that we're understanding all of the obstacles and all of that. But I do think surveying our staff and our families about the priorities in this conversation that we just had as a school board is very helpful to me and the team. And so we certainly want to get that data because that can help drive the decision-making process in terms of what the priorities of our families and our staff are.
I would be interested in some updated information because when those families were surveyed, it was back in December, it was before the holiday, lots of things were different back then, so I think it would be important to hear what the staff who are in the middle and spending lots of time outside of their school day on these committees, I believe there's a lot of teachers that are part of those working groups, so I don't have anything to say other than I would So I, I don't have anything to say other than I would, I would like to hear what, what comes out of those meetings and from parents, if the juice is worth a squeeze, so to speak.
Appreciate that.
Anything else?
Thank you.
I know you've been in the queue, so welcome Todd Dreifall for the monthly business and treasurer's report.
You may have thought I jumped over here because I was trying to push. It was because it's rather warm over in the corner and I.
It's warm over here too.
It is hot. I'm gonna start off with the year-to-date report real quick because that goes through, that's normal, you know, we're at, moving along the year. We are on an expense side below where we were this year, last year at this time. That goes a lot to what we've been doing to try to control expenses, given the fact that we, you know, are very limited on revenue, that we've lost local, both we have fees returned and so forth, but also interest income in other places that we've talked about. Overall, we are, and the majority of which is still the transportation, which is seven, eight hundred thousand dollars under where we expected to be, and that seems to be consistent. So, and that carries through when you go through and look at the year-to-date reports, where we are about eight hundred thousand dollars, eighty-sixty-two to the, better than we were last year at this time, which is a good sign, given that what we've tried to do to control the expenses and so forth as, as we've gone through this year. So there is that. If there's any questions on that, I will take, next thing is the credit rating. We did present a couple of weeks ago to both Standard and Poor's and Moody's Rating Agency. Standard and Poor's was the first year that we presented to them, first time the districts saw their rating. That is a step one, as we've talked about, for a long-term process, that if we get to a point where we're having a referendum to do a lot of that capital work that we have materially shown and so forth, we'll want to look at ratings from both agencies. They gave us a double A. One of the issues they cited for us, that a district, our size, our structure and everything, and our advantages with demographics and capital and commercial, was that districts comparatively that are rating up have a considerable more about of cash on hand at the end of the year, somewhere in that 50% or better range. Whereas we're having to go, we're, we're making a recommendation to go from 31%, which is our policy, to 35. We are projecting to be above that, but not anywhere close to 35, to 50%. So it's something to be working on. They were appreciative of, both ratings were appreciative of all of the items that we were working on with the financial plan structure, the monthly, the interesting things that they ask about, monthly year-to-date reports, so forth, a lot of the management and criteria that they are looking at and evaluating. However, that's a smaller portion than the other dynamics of what you have on hand and cash. So, so we're good, we're happy about, both those, Moody's sustained our double A1, which is one step below triple A. So they kept that where we're at with the district from our previous rating. We were happy about that. You have a few things I'm just going to cover. Coming up on your agenda for this evening, you have a surplus report as we are continually working through and cleaning out things. The operations and maintenance team finding things that have no use for us. And so larger ticket items are being brought to you to be surplus and we take those off to an auction site and government surplus.com, I think is, and it, and they're doing very well with that. So things are, are moving off of that. So that's good to know. You also have a, the annual transfer resolution to move funds from working cash into the Ed Fund to cover those funds. And that's something we do annually. We will repay that at the end of the year when the early tax money comes in. Moving on to the one item for that's on the list is the Longfellow movie of a memo. And I have a quick slide deck to kind of illustrate some of the higher points of what we've been looking at and analyzing. And again, we have, I think, I mentioned in the memo, the first one I found, and Dr. Russell said they've been talking about this since he was in grade school, I was not able to find any of those. But I did find a 2005 memo from the then board, their school assistant superintendent to board members regarding property and appraisal and so. So this has been a conversation, obviously, for many years, 16, but we have certainly the last couple started to, to work at this again and go through. And we think we've worked to document the issues around the facility. Is that, is this working? There we go. One of the things the board has asked is, what's the cost of operating Longfellow? I will tell you at the base cost, there, anything we do is going to be more than what the minimal we're doing now. I'll also tell you that this is in some way an example of some of the operations that we are keeping on life support. Whittier's Boiler went out today. They got it up and going. They'll be there at 4:00 AM to make sure it's still running so that it's heat. That's the same age as Longfellow's. It's $275,000 to replace those. Certainly that's not money for that facility we want to be spending. And that money I don't have included into these numbers. So on an annual basis, we spend about $32,000. That's manageable repairs, costs, operations, garbage, gas, so forth. If we take the next 10 years of capital items, asphalt repair, some, you know, work in the HVAC, whatever those things are, those come out to be about $770,000. So when you take that over on an annual basis and say, we're going to put aside or move or budget, we would say we're spending a hundred and $10,000 a year for operating Longfellow in its capacity as it is today. And that's doing some upgrades just to keep it, you know, operating. Obviously, we have asbestos tile. When those start to pop, it's an abatement. And that's a full abatement, not a partial where you seal it all up and you have people come in, there's different abatements, and that's the expensive one. So that's our starting point as to how much, and that's one of the things, the question the board has asked, should we put together what that would be, you know, what we're costing per year? What are our options for looking at once, if we were to move off of Longfellow? And we've gone through, we've worked with our architect, we've worked with the Dundee, the Downers Grove Economic Development Corporation on lease and cost and, and come up with options that are out there. Certainly the district could look at building the new administration center on the Longfellow site. They'll be putting it behind it, obviously still needing to use the facility as we did building it on that site and then demolishing the building afterwards. That's a very costly piece. The district could build a two-story addition to ASC or next to ASC, shift all of the Indian Trail, move the playground equipment back, increase parking lot, we have water retention issues and so forth, and have those pieces. The other option would be to close a school building. That's actually one of the cheapest options because, you know, we own the building, we can renovate it. Depending on which building, we still would have to look at, you know, some of those things of abatement and so forth. When you start moving walls, you have to deal with those and HVAC adjustments and so forth. We could at least office-based, which is one thing that we've been looking at and talking about a little more in earnest than I initially had to thought would be, would, you know, my first piece is being in government for 20 years, you own your building. There's a lot of value to short and long-term into that format, specifically now that we know what our cost is on an annual basis for that site. One of the options we came up with and we worked through diligently was working and partnering with the Village of Downers Grove. Until COVID hit, that was a real possibility. Unfortunately, that plan, that project is now, as I, as we understand it, indefinite suspension. And, you know, our time is, is continuing to move. And so therefore, we have to look elsewhere. It's not something that wouldn't be down the road perhaps if we looked at leasing until that was available or however that would work out. But at this point, that's not an option for us to consider. It's a little smaller on the screen, but we do have in memo and then obviously in your packet, the differential costs of what it is. Right now, as we have specifically talked about, certainly in the, illustrated in the Bynum hearing, as we've illustrated through the financial workshop and other meetings that the board is well aware of, our capital facilities and our capital availability is very limited. Spending that, what limited resources we have for capital on administrative space when we have many needs that impact classroom and student learning is just not priority. So we need to come up with an option that we can make work, still be functional, have an efficient and effective system of support for our 13 schools that, you know, that is better than what we have right now today on, as I said, on life support. So that brought us to the fact of, and I think as the board is well aware, you know, previous board members have voiced concerns about, you know, the value and property of Longfellow. Let me say this, how, how the district can sell property. It's very structured as to how, in the state code, as to how a school district puts property up for sale. It can sell to a government agency, of course. However, if it sold property, the board establishes in closed session a reserve price or a minimum. We have a sealed bid where we have bidders come in, look at property, and then we accept sealed bids. The highest bid above that number is the, is the winner of that property. We don't have a whole lot of say in who that individual or organization or company is, whether it be a developer, religious institution, or whomever. So whatever that price would be, the board is obligated and required by law to accept that bid as, as, you know, as the purchaser. We understand in large part the value of that property, not only because of its location in one of the great neighborhoods of Downers Grove, but in the fact that the parcels are not subdivided. They have their original lot lines and parcel structure that existed in 1920, 1930, whenever that entire section was subdivided and put in and platted. That has a distinctive value for a developer who would come in and certainly probably build very similar homes to those in the neighborhood. And that has a value price. When we take that and we go through what an estimated value of those would be, we come up with a number somewhere between $62,000, $68,000 a year, once fully built and added annual operational revenue to the district. That's an understanding, the tax cap adjusting, applying that new property in over a two, three-year period, and that's what the end result would be and illustrates that. So the sale of the property and the value of this, obviously, you know, we have new property comes online every year, 17, 18, 20 million dollars. This is a small, this is, though it's $10 million, is a portion of that. It is a, you know, part the district has control of. But the real value and issue with the property is that long-term capital liability that sits there currently and the needs of that building as it is now, and us to maintain that at that level or to change and to do something. And that has a, has an issue for us. Real quickly and then looking just as an example piece to kind of understand, certainly the question is, okay, so we have this, this costs this much. If we lease, if we do this, what does this look like for us on an operational impact for the district? Looking at our current cost on an annual basis of 110, assuming 11,000 plus square foot at $18 for an office facility for leasing, that brings us to, you know, $88,000 differential. We have, and we just isolated one half-time position, half FTE adjustment for operations once both teams, our entire administration is in one facility. I am sure we could go down into a lot more detailed operational evaluation of time, value, resources that have a lot of additional savings in there besides just that point F, that point five FTE. So we put that into the equation, then we're into, and we advance forward, go forward, and that revenue piece, you see that we're pretty much at a neutral position of, you know, for that lease versus offset of operational costs and, and revenue. And we have eliminated that long-term liability and had the potential of putting a property back on the tax rolls. One of the, there are several pieces to all of this that come into where we're at right now. Downers Grove is a very, one of the things we found in our, our rating agency calls is you document the current economy of the area. Downers Grove has one of the largest square footage of office space in the Chicagoland area outside of the city. It's 4.5 million square feet. Very positively for the community and for the district, it is plus 82% occupied. And that Class A space in the Hamilton buildings and the Hamilton brothers and, and that along Butterfield and, and 88 go for $25 to $30 a square foot. So the valuation in there is, is very strong and helps the district immensely in its commercial base. That is not, that is not obviously the office space that we'd be looking for. We'd be looking for B-ish type of office space, which is, you know, steps down. There is availability and in a time right now where there's more availability than, than previously. And there are some projections that, you know, there could be, things turn around, some of that space could be harder to find, you know, come summer and, and fall. So there's that capacity that the district is in an advantageous position, more so than previously, to look for space that it could turn into an administration building for several years, many years to come, until such time as we're working through and evaluating some other pieces and we can spend some time on capital that impact classrooms. It also then would put and allow for us to move maintenance and operations into the ASC building and that, and address those capacity and have that need and still be able to centrally support the district. So with that, Dr. Russell, anything I missed from previous conversation, presentation?
I think you covered all of it at the FAC. That would be the only other thing that I would, would want to mention. You know, we, we had this conversation in March about a year ago. Obviously, the world changed and one of the things that the FAC has been continuing to talk about is not only our master facility plan, but the Longfellow situation, especially now that the partnership with the village is no longer a feasible option at this particular time. And so the FAC has been talking about this. And the reason it's being presented this evening is to kind of update the board on where we're at with our conversations in the FAC, to update the community, to gather feedback, and then talk about next steps.
Questions?
I had an aha moment during the presentation. I did have a question for you, but you answered it during your presentation. When you, you talked about we've had some interest from non-residential developers and then you clarified that we include religious groups.
I mean, anyone, I mean, and that, I wanted. I mean, anyone, I mean, and that, I wanted-
I don't know if I need to ask that question, but it seemed to me like, I don't know if you want to discuss that, it seemed like we have had some interest from-
The, I will tell you, I have every quarter an email from preschool Kensington?
Yes.
Kensington School. Every quarter is asking, what's the status and are you going to, when?
And we can't decide.
And, you know, but that is a, no, you, it is, I mean, there's obviously reasons for that, you know, to protect the board, protect the district-
Sure.
-as to, you know, and how that works. But they too, you know, they are very interested in wanting to get into the Downers Grove market. Obviously, there is limited availability of space that they like to have for their type of, of organization, and so, you know, they-
And I was just about to say, we can't decide who we sell that to. We have to give it to the highest bidder. And I'm going to clarify my comments. I'm not, I'm not saying we wouldn't sell to another school wanting to come into our community, but that's fine. I guess my concern would be if they're a tax exempt organization, and that impacts our ability to collect-
There is definitely the possibility that a, and that's why I always want to point out, I use a religious, you know, because those would technically, you know, traditionally be exempt. There is always the possibility that a, an exempt nonprofit organization could purchase the land, and it would not be taxable.
And that's just, I had that aha moment aside, Sharon.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the Policy Committee report from January 19, 2021. I don't know if we want to start with Member Weiner?
Yes, we met on January 19 over Zoom, and it was a rather short meeting compared to others. But at that time, Dr. Russell went over, you know how we have the Board Policy Manual and then the Administrative Procedural Manual? And IASB sends out a questionnaire that we fill out so that they can customize it, just like we did with the Policy Manual when we adopted that, that we fill out so that they can hone and make it particular to us specifically. And so they're working on going through that questionnaire right now and hoping to come back after spring, around spring break with the edited, updated after editing and taking our questionnaire and what we, how we answered everything and coming back with it. So would that mean at the April policy meeting, we would be looking at it?
Yeah, and, you know, one point that I'd like to just remind the board of, the administrative procedures aren't something that the board needs to approve or something that the board needs to amend, but we do still run it through the Policy Committee just to get community input and advisement on it. But this is more kind of our operating blue book or our procedures that we follow to make sure that we implement the board policy as written. So it wouldn't be something that would come back to the full board for a vote, but certainly we would run it by our Policy Committee and then update the board here.
That was my report.
All right, perfect, thank you. And the Legislative Committee has been hard at work with two meetings from January 27th and February 3rd. Member Doshi, want to fill us in?
Yeah, we have been hard at work. Yesterday was the, what we consider the pregame, was the regular NFL Super Bowl. The Legislative Forum, which is the Super Bowl, will be coming up on February 19.
Can't say it's Super Bowl, it's a big game.
I was going to say, do you have to pay for that now?
It's the big game.
Because Steve will write a check. We have, we have the Legislative Forum coming up on February 19th. We're very excited about it. This year's going to look a little bit different. Typically, we'd have a legislative breakfast, this will be Legislative Forum. It'll be virtual in nature, but it's an interesting opportunity for us to get what we hope to be a higher attendance from our legislators. We tend to have a few attend every year. This year, we are currently expecting somewhere between five and seven legislators to attend. So it should be a great discussion and a variety of perspectives, which is exactly what we hope for every year. This year, the, to give it a general sense of the format, we will be doing a large forum to be able to get some general questions out and answers from our legislators. And then we're going to try something pretty unique, which is to break out into a small group sessions with legislators and a, you know, a small group of maybe, you know, eight to 12 individuals that can have a meaningful conversation with legislator for a handful of minutes, and then go on to another legislator's space to have a conversation there as well. A few of the topics that we're going to be addressing at the forum, one will be, we have a new federal administration in place now, and with that often does come different educational initiatives. And so from our federal legislators, we'll want to learn about what's coming up on their plate, what are they hearing, what are they talking about that ultimately might impact us in the future over the next few years. Locally, we also know that most recently, the state of Illinois did not pass the graduated income tax. And because of that, there potentially could be impacts to the funding that the district receives in terms of education funding. So we're asking our legislators about, about the impact that we should anticipate from that not passing. And then there's a top-of-mind question that we have, I think that's particularly relevant for where we are right now as a district and where we are as a society, is what are, what are the legislators doing on our behalf when it comes to a return to learn, to get past the pandemic? What can federal and state legislators do to help us as school districts? They have to meet our budgetary requirements every year to get, to get past this in a meaningful way that's best for students. And so there's going to be a rich level of dialogue, I hope, and a rich level of questions that we'll ask our legislators to respond to and just have a meaningful conversation about. We're pretty excited about it. That again is coming up on February 19th, and at the next monthly meeting, we'll do a share out of how the forum went, I hope. Member Hennessy, anything you'd add?
Not really, yeah, but just to comment, kind of piggybacking off of what you said, I think it's, while it's disappointing that we can't have our normal in-person breakfast, I think this does have the potential to kind of open up some opportunities for more dialogue between the community members and the staff members attending the breakfast and the legislators with the small group breakout session format. And I think that's kind of exciting, just being the sort of public policy nerd that I am, like, I can't wait for the chance to ask a question to one of my legislators. So I think it'll be kind of, I'll be very interested to see the outcome compared to previous years and what we all kind of feel, like how it went and how the vibe was with people being, have that more one-on-one almost type of environment. So I think it's going to be, it's going to be good.
You still going to open with your comic styling, Cora?
Of course.
Awesome.
We'll see. This is, this is serious stuff, Karen.
I know, and you got to warm me up so I can, I'm ready for it. Any questions? Thank you, Cora, and Emily. Next up is the Financial Advisory Committee from February 5, 2021. We talked about a couple of different topics. One of them was we looked at our ratings from our two rating agencies. One of them is Moody's, who we've been with for a long time, and we stated AA1. As Todd mentioned earlier, that's one step below a AAA rating. We also, for the first time, went to S&amp;P, and we were hoping to secure an AA+, which would have been in align with the AA1 rating that we have from Moody's, but it did come in a double A. And part of that was, as he discussed earlier, the low cash on hand that we have in this district. And so one of the, one of the pieces that we've been doing over the last couple of years, and it did, we did slow down the conversations a little bit because of COVID, but the big important thing is to adjust our policy to get that up to 35%. So for the members in our Policy Committee, I, I think we're close to, at one point, we couldn't hit that number yet. So it's, at some point, if we're, if we're comfortable with, with where we're going to come out next year, that's a policy that we're going to have to look. But 35% is not necessarily going to be enough in the long run, so we really are going to have to start looking ahead then, kind of at that next step, how do we get that closer to 40%? I'm not saying that that's going to be something that we can do overnight. It took us a while to get from 31 to 35, but it is something that people are paying attention to because it is, is something that is a risk. And as you heard, many other districts that are sort of at the same place that we are are closer to, to 50%. And so that does put a little bit of a challenge ahead for us, but I think at some point, if we can aim for that 40%, that's going to put us in a real solid place. But to start out at that 35% is going to be really important. We did look at the year-to-date, we went through that here today. Nothing majorly new on there. Some of the stuff is normalizing. If you remember from January, our, some of our expenses were a little high because we had that extra payroll. That started to normalize in February because we didn't have that. A big portion of the meeting, though, was focused on the presentation that you just heard from Todd regarding the sale of Longfellow. There's just a couple of points that really came up strong in the meeting that I think are really important to talk about. And one of the things is that when we look at that assessment and we talk about the impact of cost on that building, we were looking at that five-year and 10-year mark. And those are really important for us gauging out and sort of looking at the value and what it costs us on an annual basis. But I think it's really important to note that that 10-year mark is not some hurdle that we just need to get over, and then we're sort of on the other side of the fence and the grass is greener and everything's going to be good. That gets us over that 10-year hump, and the next 10 years doesn't look better, it looks worse. That building is in real disrepair, and we spent a lot of time talking about the value of that building for what it provides us as a district. And it really, having our administrative split is actually more, it hurts us more than it, than it helps us. That building is not serving a good purpose for us. So we spent time talking about the value of that property in general as well. And unfortunately, through a lot of deep analysis and, like Todd was alluding to, back in 2005, though that's not when you were in middle school, is even back that far, we don't see any value in holding onto that property because the acreage that that property is, is not something that we would really want to build on at any given point. And where the status of that building is, we don't necessarily want to put a lot of repair into it because that building will never really serve our purpose. So, and then we are in a unique spot in that, that is still subdivided. Just so you know, for the members that were not on the board when we did the Lester addition, Lester was in the same situation where it still had several plots. And the second we wanted to do any work on the building, the village of Downers Grove has sort of taken a stance of, if you're going to do any modifications to the building before we'll approve that to happen, we're going to make you unify that into a single plot of surveys. So that is something that, if we ever did anything to that building, would actually probably devalue that property for us as well. So I think that's an important thing to note. So it's never easy, but one of the things that we asked was, is holding onto that property, does that give us the ability to do something in the future? And being at a small acreage, the statement was that it didn't, and that we have plenty of land in this district that we could reutilize in a better way if we ever wanted to expand along those lines. And so it really then came down to a conversation a little bit around the idea of leasing in general, and that we see some advantages to that in, if you go back to when, when Dr. Russell and I were in, in high school, the current ASC building housed both all of the 99 central administrative staff and all the 58 administrative staff. Our needs have changed in those 27 years. So it's really important to note that there's some value in the idea of leasing because we can't predict maybe what we're going to need or look like in five or 10 years. There may be an opportunity even to partner up with the village or something like that. It does give us that level of flexibility. So that is where we as a whole were sort of focusing some of our conversations. We are by nowhere near done, but it was a complicated conversation, but one, I think, in general, that building holds a lot of value off of our books, way more than it did on our books, was sort of the general consensus that came out of that meeting. I don't know if you have stuff that you want to add on to that?
Once again, it's a very comprehensive summary, but I guess I'll just kind of say, like, the value equation that was kind of discussed at length, you know, over multiple meetings, you know, some very smart people from the community is, it lowers our risk and it provides flexibility. So that's kind of the balance that feeds into the fact that the option presented does make sense financially, but you kind of look at it from a flexibility and risk profile that also supports that, that position.
And I think another thing to note on here as well is that nowhere in that projection are we even talking about the value that we would receive when we actually sell the property. Everything has been around not having the burden of that property, and then hopefully that goes to a taxable body that goes in there. We obviously have a lot of people interested in the development of putting homes there because it would fit in very well into that neighborhood. So we've looked at it from that perspective, but that would also involve us receiving a one-time payment for that property as well, which is not something that has been a major focus of what we're talking about right now. That assessment will come a little bit later and something that we would talk about more in closed, is, is we do an evaluation of the actual value of that property. Any questions?
One of the things that I think you brought up today that I hadn't heard before, and I'd love to just understand a bit more about the real estate that we have across the district. The value of that land, I imagine, isn't in the building that's on that land itself, but the potential of what that land could be used for, for future purposes for the district. I heard somebody mention the availability of space in other parts of our district where if we wanted to do something with an acre of land, that acre of land also exists in other places. Do you mind sharing a bit more about where do we have available property to build on in the future, should we want, you know, green to build on?
Well, I think there's a lot, and Kevin and Todd could probably speak a lot further to that, but I know, for example, we have some land, you know, over by O'Neill and Fairmount over there. There's a lot of land in between those two buildings and a lot of space over there. Bel Air, I think, holds a lot of space, but I think in general, there's a lot of, some of ours, I think Lester's about reached their, their ability to build on their property, but many of ours still do hold a lot more. Maybe Kevin, you could speak a little bit further.
Yeah, so if you're talking in terms of empty lots that the district owns around town, that's not what, what the FAC was referring to. I think when you look at where the Longfellow Center is located and you look at, you know, the residents and the schools, you've got Pierce-Downer School there now. Obviously, Pierce-Downer is not something you would build on, but right down the street you also have Henry Puffer. And there are several options on Henry Puffer's land that you have. Or to the north, you've got Bel Air School that has a lot of extra land that you could build on. On the south side of town, we do have a lot more room at some of our schools. If we ever needed to add additional buildings, you could do that in some of those other areas on the current land that we have. When you look at, you know, if you're building a new elementary school or a new middle school, and you look at the space that Longfellow offers, it's really not conducive to modern schools and the amount of land that you would need in terms of building on that particular site.
I think there's also a desire in general, we run 11 locations right now, and I think there is no desire to expand the number of locations we have. I think that is, you're looking at what's happening sort of in modern education. It's building fewer, larger centers where you have a lot more opportunity to provide diverse learning options as opposed to having as many schools as we have. So I don't think we would ever, especially in an area right where you have Puffer and Pierce right there, would be an idea to, to expand the number of buildings that we're currently using. And as Kevin likes to point out a lot, like, we can't forget that, this is not the first time we've done this. Washington Park was once Washington School. The Lincoln Center was once the Lincoln School. I think he said that in full board meetings here before. So this is not something that's new for us. It's, at one point, Puffer was its own district, a K-8 district, and that was a big process, you know, come in. So it's not like making changes like this is completely unique to our district, but it is a hard one, and it's something that obviously, you know, anytime there's change in the community, obviously, I'm expecting that over the next few months, we'll probably have a lot of input from the community at large about it, but it's not something that is unprecedented for District 58. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. All right, the district leadership team did not meet in January, but we will be meeting later this month, so give you an update then. So Health and Wellness Committee, Member Harris?
Yes, we met on January 14.
14.
And just a couple items that I felt like the board would be interested in knowing. We've looked at December data, December claims data, and December is our, was our most expensive month of 2020. That really isn't a surprise because it's, that's within the rhythms of a normal year. December is an expensive month because people know their deductibles- December is an expensive month because people know their deductibles reset at January 1st, so they go in and they take care of something before it's going to, before their payments are out-of-pocket payments are impacted. As it was the most expensive month, the total cost of the plan is about $920,000 with expenditures over revenue by about $140,000. However, you all used to my rather saying when reports from the Health and Wellness Committee throughout the year. And that being, that much expenditure of revenues in that month is negated by the fact that so many of our other months, we were way, revenues were way over expenditures. As it looks, as we look to close the books on 2020, we're looking at a surplus in the PPO plan of about $1.3 million or 17.8%. And in the HSA, about $279,000 or 22.3%. Looking forward into fiscal year, County Year 21, our projections now are there, you know, it's just, we are just starting, but there's, those are just projections at this point in time. Who knows what the year has for us in store? But with our rates that we set back in October to take effect on January 1st, our group alternatives, our consultants, our consultancy is expecting us to have a surplus of about 7.8% in the PPO plan and 8.5% in the HSA plan. And then the last item that we talked about in detail, but just for the board's general awareness, we are still talking as a committee about our wellness program and we're reviewing ideas and thoughts about potential recommendations that would come to the board possibly April. But we're still having a couple more meetings where we're going to be looking at more options and bringing that back to the board for approval in a couple months. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions? I guess the only question I have is, I'm assuming it's Mike Baker, right, with Group Alternatives? That, I know there's, after having a lot of years where our numbers were quite high, there's a bit of excitement that some of that has been quelled a little bit, but I'm assuming we're taking into account that some things that may have potentially happened maybe in a previous year or this year, that we need, that we do need to be prepared, that some of that stuff might just move and then new stuff would come in. So I'm assuming we can't just look forward, we're going to have to probably do some analysis of what we would normally expect in a regular year, like, and sort of readjust our thinking and figuring out and anticipating once sort of we return to that level of normalcy, what typically a year would look like.
Sure. Somebody who put off a procedure because it was elective for a long period of time because they didn't want to be inside a hospital. Once we get longer, further into this year and more people are vaccinated, those might feel more comfortable, that's going to affect our plan once they start taking on perhaps an expensive procedure. I don't know too much in Todd may about like the minutia of his calculations, but they're always very conservative with their, with their numbers. And here comes Todd, I'll turn over.
No, and I'll jump in as well. I think there is going to be a little bit of people going to get elective surgeries that perhaps they could put off, but there's also several things that people will never go back to. So for instance, if someone delayed that trip to the dentist, right, that time has now passed. If somebody didn't go to their, you know, therapy or whatever that case is, that time is now passed. And so those will not be made up. And so that's what they're factoring in, you know, what is your typical year and some of those elective procedures, but then some of those other things that people just skipped over, they won't return to. And so you will get a significant savings out of that.
And actually Darren and I were talking about that today. You know, I might have foregone a ski trip last winter, or this winter because of COVID, and I saved myself an emergency room visit. A lot of expensive physical therapy, but that will never come back.
To that point, and you know, I'll use my own family as an example of that, you know, a lot of athletics have been postponed for kids, and that is a big driver of our health plan when kids get hurt in sports, and we didn't see all those. That being said, we are anticipating seeing some of those as sports come back in and people haven't played in a while, you're likely to see maybe more injuries. And so trying to fix all those, I can assure you from our lens as an administrative team, those are the conversations that Todd is having with Mike Baker. And being very conservative, because it's not like we've got past pandemics to draw off of to say, okay, what was our experience in this one or that one? So again, you will still see a lot of those savings, but you know, we are being very conservative in what we're anticipating because there are a lot of unknowns there.
Yeah, I just don't want us taking a victory lap on the fact that we're looking good. I just, I want to make sure that we're keeping an eye on the future there.
Our focus is moving then to the wellness, you know, incentives and so forth and what we can do to continually keep that peace. But yes, I mean, you know, we do conservative on all these pieces to make sure that, you know, we preserve our structure.
I appreciate that. And I'm not going to lie, I am worried about when we haven't been active for a while and then we get active again, we are, we're likely to get hurt on the slopes.
Are you speaking as a man of a certain age, I think?
Okay. Any other questions for Greg? All right, we have two discussion items tonight. The first one, I want to introduce Dr. Jane Yuzentis to talk about the 21-22 school year.
Maybe it's cooler over there than it is over here.
I don't know about that, yes.
I had to send my sweater, geez. So, yes, we have the calendar memo that's on the agenda tonight with the draft calendar. And really, as you'll see, we are modeling the calendar, our proposed calendar is very similar to what we had proposed in a typical year. We, again, based on feedback from our staff and communities previously, are in line with District 99 for all the middle portions of the calendar, those holidays, those days off. And then the difference really is in the start and end dates. As you know, our buildings don't have air conditioning and we typically start somewhere between a week and a half to two weeks after District 99. So that would be the difference as we are making that same recommendation to start a little bit later. And then however, but we're still aligned. The other important piece of our calendar is we do think it is critical for continuing the work with our staff on our professional learning and really those, the implementation of the curriculum, that we add back the professional learning Mondays that we've had in the past. So there is that recommendation to have the Mondays at 2:00 release time for that very important training for our staff. And that is added on the draft, really, those are the, those are the highlights. The couple pieces that are unknown, at this point, we do not have days off designated on election days. We're still trying to get that information. I know Dr. Russell is working with Kevin Bardo as well to get information as to where will our schools be used as polling places? And so at this point, those are days of school. When we have more information, we would then have that conversation as to would we have a remote learning day? Would we extend the calendar? And we really want to have that conversation at that time to make that best, that best choice.
And so just to piggyback off of that, while we want to be active participants in our community and offer our buildings up for so many things, hosting elections is not one of them, and I want to be very clear why. Number one, during a pandemic, there are several health concerns about bringing in all unknown individuals into your building, not knowing what health risks you have. Also, the security concerns that we have around elections and bringing in people and not being able to have police officers in all of our schools, it is certainly a concern. With regard to this school year, there was a new law passed in terms of the federal elections where the governor said all schools are closed for the federal elections that take place in November. So the DuPage County Election Commission really jumped on that opportunity to use schools again. We have been lobbying not to use the schools. Well, one of the side effects of that is now that they got into the schools, they want to also use it for the consolidated elections. And so I put in a request not to use our buildings for the April 6 election. I do not know if that request is going to be granted. I can tell you on a deeper level, we're working with Dr. Ruschetti, the regional office, our local legislators, and down in Springfield to try and remove schools from serving as election sites. But in the coming weeks, I am going to get an answer on whether or not our buildings used to be, or need to be used on April 6th for this year. If that is the case, I will bring a recommendation to the board in terms of what we should do with that day. And we've got some options, you know, we can simply cancel school that day and add a date at the end of the year. We can do a remote day on that day. So there are different options that we'll have, and I'll make a recommendation once I get that final answer. But in terms of next year, once we get an answer on that, that could impact how we do the school calendar as well if we have to host elections. Because hosting school and an election at the same time in 2021 or '22 is not a real feasible option anymore. Again, the Election Commission, they're wonderful people, they're great. I understand why they want to use schools. We have got plenty of parking, we've got plenty of space, but it just really isn't conducive to health and safety anymore for our schools.
Really, our plan would be to bring our final calendar to the board for approval in March. Tonight was really wanting to have discussion or answer any questions or if there's any other information you were looking for prior to bringing the calendar forward.
On a personal note, I'd say this is what I was most likely expecting to see, still starting around the same time of year and ending when we normally do. The one thing I would just note is, I think one of the things the board has sort of emphasized in the past as we decided to move from having a traditional calendar with some half-days and some days off for teacher enrichment, and moving that into a regular, consistent Monday afternoon at 2:00 PM, is how incredibly important it is, especially in the year coming back from a pandemic with a limited year, is to use that time to reduce the amount of times that teachers are out of the classroom during the school day where they would be with substitutes. I think maximizing the time that our students have with their teachers is going to be critical as we move, coming out of this. And so I would just really like to emphasize that in my support for this, I would really like to make sure that we're trying to limit the other times our teachers are out of the classroom, especially right now.
Absolutely. And thank you, Darren, for pointing that out because that is also a priority to continue reducing the use of substitutes and pulling teachers.
Yeah, thank you.
My only comment to the proposed schedule is I'm putting my parent hat on and having the last day of school be on a Monday is not good, no bueno. And I just, I just think kids, kids are done and so, and probably so are teachers. So if there's any way we, you could like figure that out, I think Monday, the last day is not nice.
So let me, let me give you a little background on that. And rarely does that ever stay on that Monday. The reason why it works out that day or that way is you want to start the year with a, with a full week for teacher training and things like that. And so that's why it happens that way. But I think when we get done with our election conversations, when we get done with whether or not we want to have snow days, all of those different things that are going to, you know, take place a little further down the road, the likelihood of it ending on a Monday will likely change. I know that's feedback that we also got from our association as part of this process, and so we'll continue to look at that. But thank you for that because I understand the concern around that for sure.
Yeah, they want to be heavy on a Friday and then they can go on their summer vacation, hopefully.
In most years, we can say comfortably, if you end it on a Monday, don't worry, there'll be a few events that will take place where it will never end on a Monday. We can say that pretty comfortably, although with remote learning as a potential option, obviously it's something we need to talk about.
Okay.
The one suggestion, Tracy, to your point, is that in the opening week, considering removing the Wednesday, which is a training day for instructional assistants, so that's, that's definitely a deliberate decision of, we really need that day. Yes, we've been asked to look at it, you know, to adjust a day on either end, but that middle day of the week is very important for our instructional assistants and their ability to be prepared to work with kids also.
Just a couple, sorry, a couple of comments. First, I just wanted to say I'm really glad to hear that the early release Mondays are going to be back for next year. I think that is so important, like you guys have already said, for the teachers, especially with everything that we've experienced this year and kind of a, you know, due to circumstances beyond our control, lack of attention to curriculum updates and just different things like that, I think it's going to be hugely important for those teachers to have that time once a week to not only kind of revisit some of those old conversations, but some of the things we talked about today with looking at gaps and holes and how can we adjust and how can we, I think that time is going to be crucial going forward. So I'm really glad to see that those days are coming back. To Tracy's point, I was going to say the same thing. I think that that would be one of those days where you'd be on the playground, this is the most ridiculous thing, that we have to come back on a Monday. I mean, it would just be constant. And I think, I agree with you that I don't, do not think that they should take away the instructional assistant training day. I think that is hugely important. Those staff members need that training as well, it's vital. But potentially moving back, like, could you potentially shift the whole thing back one day so that New Teacher Week started one day sooner? And I know that would shift that to a Friday instead of a Monday and all that kind of stuff, but from a former teacher, August 1st rolls around and I'm back to work. So I don't know that that, at that point, is that one day. Those teachers are, they're already back in teacher mode, they're already, so they might appreciate being off and free on that Friday and coming back a day earlier in August. I don't know, it's just something, definitely something to think about, I think.
Yeah, absolutely. And it is something that we did brainstorm as a possibility, for sure.
Yeah. The risk always is, is we're going to work really hard to get it to end on a Friday and we're going to end up pushing it to Tuesday.
Right, for sure.
Right. But.
Other questions?
I think we're good. Thank you.
Thanks, Jane.
All right, Todd, come on back down for the draft financial plan review.
Fortunately or unfortunately, I think this is a, this is a brief one. Going back to, again, December 7th, when we initially put a, a projection together for the board and showed where we were looking at a deficit for next year of $1 million. The administration team has been meeting. A few things have happened along the way. One, we reforecast and re-project where we end up this year. And you've seen through your year-to-date reports how that's been trending, and we think we're in good position that we have shown that we're going to not have the $1.6 million deficit that we originally budgeted. Again, a large percentage of that is due to the transportation piece. We then received good news with the federal funds of $800,000, the COVID next grant level money. Our plan and projection is to work to take in about $600,000 of that this year for reimbursements of a lot of the expenses that we've incurred in going through that process. That's one of the things that we're going to be working on pretty quickly here to get that amended and get that in, and then the other additional 200 into the fiscal year 22. So that's on the revenue side. Also on the revenue side, CPI is no, we, we went with a 1%, we ended up with 1.4. Not a huge adjustment, but an adjustment to the positive. On expense side, we had a 5% increase in health insurance as we projected back months ago. That means that January, that means we would be coming back to the board at the September meeting with a 10% increase on Jan, for January 1st of 2022. We just don't see that happening. Again, we're still conservative in our projections and where we're at, but we don't see that that growth is going to occur in the, in that timeframe, given what we're seeing going and the delay of recovery back into, you know, and out of the COVID. So when we bring that down, and that is a big spend, we have, we dropped down 2% of 800, of $8 million that the district spends on health insurance costs, that brings a large expense down. From there, we went and started looking through, through several meetings, you know, focusing, and one of the things, I'll go back step, as you may recall, one of the focuses we wanted to ensure in that initial planning and what we do with our, our plan and our projection is make sure we have some, you know, building in some of those replacement costs for technology that were sometimes an afterthought in previous years. And building that and putting that in forward, as well as ensuring that curriculum, you know, schedule is in there. We go through there, James looks through where he's at, what, you know, the initial piece and where he needs to be. And if you look at the tables and you're going to see, you know, you see some of the sample tables in your memo, next year is an anomaly because, I keep talking about the transportation piece, there's a reason for it. Our expenses are down this year significantly. That means our reimbursement is even less next year and from the state. Our expenses next year, we project to be back to full, opening at full, plus we know that our renewal rate is about 4% from the, 4% from, for student, we don't know the others yet. We build that in there. We know that expense goes to $5 million in that fund. So you have that offset of reimbursement is not going to match expense on that. Flip it to fiscal year 23, your reimbursement goes back up because you have that full expense. So we have that one-year dip that has that impact on the overall operational budget because certainly we have to make adjustments in funds on hand to cover, you know, for the year and so forth. And then in funds on hand to cover, you know, for the year and so forth and the levy adjustment. So we know we have a one-year anomaly on some of those things. So James goes back, looks at what can push out a year, just a lot of the core curriculum has already been done. So what we're looking at now going forward is, you know, some of those other non-core programs that don't have that expense that language arts or math or science has. So that adjusts and goes forward. And then we have some other adjustments that are coming, and that'll be part of the presentation that Jane is going to make, the staffing plan in March. You know, again, this is our first year of pushing this agenda. We're pushing, understand, we're pushing a presentation of expenses and a structure two or three months ahead of where we normally would be with a budget presentation. So we're really, you know, compressing that schedule for us. So as we stand here with what Jane's recommendation for staffing will be that the board will see in March and will incorporate into the financial plan, we are in a balanced position as we're looking at our projections today, which is where we need to be. It is a very tight year for '22 right now. It opens up again in '23 and '24. A large part is that transportation, as I keep saying, but then we also get the full impact of that downtown TIF coming off and that $1.4 million annually coming on the books. We only get a portion of that for '22, we get the full frontal, you know, the full frontal of that 1.4 million in '23 and then growth from that point.
When you say that we're balanced, does that include properly funding the working cash fund at 35%? Or does that just mean?
No, that has, yes, that's maintain, you're correct. So our goal, my, our goal is looking at balance, at revenue exceeding expenditures and meeting that 35% threshold. Now, the one piece we also have to do is, we originally presented and projected even a year ago that sinking fund that is in the O&M, that's $850,000, that is capital money that is in O&M that we use now for operations, you know, needs, that delays that repayment. Our goal was to start moving that balance to capital, starting in '22. What we're saying now and looking at, one of the things will be, and I probably omitted from the memo, is start, we delay that to '23 and then take 400, take the '22 payment and the '23 payment in '23. And that allows, because otherwise we're going to have to do that, we're going to have to find another $200,000 in reduction of, and we're really looking at reduction of programs at that.
So you're delaying, but you're saying in '23 we can actually catch up and be on target?
Right, right now with the projection, yes.
Okay.
So that's, in a nutshell, the short, and I do apologize for not having a much more robust structure, but the first year I wanted to make sure we have it in a format that when we first presented to you is, you know, is appropriate. And we just weren't there yet. So I apologize for the delay on that, but wanted to give you an update as to where we're at currently and what you'll see next month. And you'll see, we'll get that out to you as soon as we can to give you some time before the March meeting.
I think one of the things that really benefits us when we're looking at a five-year plan as opposed to the typical one-year budget is a couple of things you just talked about. For example, Dr. Ike Miller's moving some of his projects to later. When we did that in the past, we never really got to see the impact that that was going to have on future budgets. So I think, I know one of the things I'll be looking at is to make sure that we're not balancing here and.
Exactly. And it's one of the things we will build into the plan. We will show you the staffing plan for the next year, plus we'll show you the technology plan rollout and what we plan to do each year, you know, in that five-year window, as well as curriculum and what the curriculum and instruction department is looking at targeting for updates of curriculum. Because, you know, those are in the mind or in the back or, you know, Justin has his stuff in, you know, sheets and he's planning for that. It just puts it all out into one document and makes it public and gives everyone a sense as to what our direction is and what our goal is. And then it helps move the budget and structure. So I will add just one thing, and certainly, we set March as a plan date for approval, understanding that the board had to make decisions on staffing for the following year. Certainly, that's first and foremost, but certainly, you know, not approving a financial plan in March is, there's no, you know, it's a goal we set. If the board feels that they want another month to talk about or wants more information, we certainly can do that and flesh it out some more if you so feel, obviously. There's no impact to us, it's, you know, we're still planning to move forward. But the staffing plan is the important part because obviously it's the largest piece of our expense.
Okay.
Just one more highlight here. What this does not include, and we never anticipate this, but if we get it, it would make these numbers look better, is if there is some kind of another stimulus from the federal government, which there's significant talk about right now, that could certainly help some of these numbers. But again, we're not going to count on that at this particular point, and even if there is one, there's no guarantee that it would make it all the way down to Downers Grove. And so, again, that's not included in here. The only stimulus money that you see here is from laws that are already passed and it's been allocated to us.
Any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. This is an opportunity now for members of the audience to share public comment with the board, but is not intended for a time for members of the public to enter into a dialogue with the board. Issues raised during public comment may be added to future agendas or addressed by administrative staff as appropriate. Please remember that criticism of individuals is not in order. The board has allotted 30 minutes tonight for public comment. We ask that you keep your comments to a three-minute limit to allow everyone the opportunity to speak. Have we received any cards tonight?
No.
Nope. You don't have, I'll then open it up if we didn't have any. All right, so we haven't. So then I will go ahead, since we do have people here tonight, I will go ahead and open the floor. If anyone would like to make a public comment, please step up to the podium, state your name and attendance area, and your comment.
All right. My name is Joe Leo, I'm in the Pierce Downer attendance area, and I was once a former board member, just like you guys.
Welcome back.
Thanks, I guess.
Thank you for waiting so patiently as well.
Oh, no, that's okay. Actually, some very interesting stuff. Number one, I'd like to thank the foundation for that wonderful year. I was part of the citizen group that formed the foundation and had the pleasure of being the first treasurer and secured their nonprofit exemption and all that kind of stuff. So it's great to hear, they're still doing good stuff.
Great presentation at Pierce Downer. I haven't seen any inside of that school for 20 years now.
It was great to see. It was interesting, though, to hear that we're talking about a roof at Pierce Downer because that was the same battle we were fighting 20 years ago.
Yeah.
But anyway, I won't belabor that point. But first of all, Todd, thank you for your analysis on the Longfellow thing. There was a lot to read there, a lot to think about, but a couple of things that I came away with that I think you guys have to consider. Number one, you're not going to be able to get 12 homes. There are, there will be 12 lots, but any other larger construction project that has happened in Village, there's been significant space for water retention type thing. So you're going to lose, at least, my guess would be at least two buildable lots for that. And last time I was here, I asked, spoke up and asked you guys that next time you were at Longfellow, go out the back door and just look south because of the tilt. That this is a huge environmental problem that will emerge if we put 10 new homes on that spot. That water has to go somewhere and it's going to head south. So think about that a little bit. Next, the analysis, while I like the side-by-side of a new building versus renting, that should probably be run out maybe 30 years because you think about it, I mean, the new building isn't, goes, doesn't go away in 10 years, but the rent continues. So analysis would be a little more fair, or I guess more revealing, if you ran it out a little bit further. Thinking about other options, and this is something that the financial advisory committee 20 years ago had thought about with Pierce, Longfellow, I should say, was working maybe with the Park District, sort of a sale, but with an option to buy back type deal so that the district had the option, if necessary, if they wanted the property back, to maybe get an influx of cash that they could use for, you know, whatever purposes from the Park District. We wouldn't get the annual revenue, of course, because it would be Park District land. But a clause in the deal would say that after 15 years, 30 years, 40 years, 50 years, however long, that the school district would have the option to buy it back. So if they desire to build a new center there, or who knows what education's going to look like, you would have that option. But this is something I've also mentioned back then, and I will keep mentioning it is, and while I appreciate you're looking forward five, 10 years, that's great, very good, start thinking 50, 100, 200 years. Darren, you had mentioned, we don't know what education is going to look like. We don't, no one does. I mean, so we're giving up an asset. We've already sold Washington, we sold Lincoln. We're selling, but we're not going to have the opportunity to get some of that stuff back. And I'm just concerned that we're going to do this and, you know, 200 years from now, the board members are going to be scratching their heads, why would we have gotten rid of that? So keep that in mind as well. And then lastly, this is a personal and selfish note, but I live two houses south of Longfellow. And I know you've thought about it, but I don't know if you can fully appreciate what you're going to thrust upon 50 or so families. You're talking about a two- to three-year construction project. Man, that's brutal. We've got over 25 kids under 10 years old on our block. So now you're going to have construction trucks running up and down the street with all the debris and the garbage and the noise. That's a big, big change in our community. And I know the school district has always talked about family and our neighbors and all that kind of stuff, so keep that in mind. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, everyone. I'm Marshall Schmidt, I'm in the Pierce Downer District attendance area, and I too, like Joe, live just south of Longfellow School. And I'm not going to be quite as kind as Joe. I think that the fact that Mr. Sissel can get up and spend half an hour answering your questions about curriculum with you craving for data, craving for data. With regard to Longfellow, the presentation that was made failed to analytically compare the alternatives on a one-on-one, on a like basis. Some costs were thrown out, there was a parade of horribles about what's going to happen with Longfellow School, and then there were some mentions about, oh, all this additional revenue is going to come in. There's no rigorous comparison, and I'm going to point out some places where the parade of horribles have been emphasized and the additional revenue has been underestimated. So let's start there. Let's start with the supposed increase in income. First of all, the comment that was made that only like homes are going to be built in the neighborhood is ludicrous. When I stood here the last time, I was before the village council defending or opposing a developer who wanted to build two huge homes on the 50-foot lots, which you cited as an advantage, okay? What's going to happen is you're going to dramatically change the nature of the neighborhood and people are going to move out. You're going to lower the value of the other homes in the neighborhood for some of the reasons that Joe identified, but also because people are going to look at this and say, this isn't the neighborhood I moved into. This is a different neighborhood that's not taken into account. Look at the bottom line of the table that, by the way, was not in the memo that was publicly available. What's the bottom line? The bottom line is it's revenue neutral, that at the end of the day, when you figure in all the costs that you figured in, it's going to be about a break-even proposition. And the statement was made that, well, it gives you flexibility and it lowers your risk. Untrue. It increases your risk because now you're at the mercy of the rental market. Right now, you own the building, you control the building, you can make intelligent decisions about what to do with the capital asset. Once you sell it, that's gone. When you rent, the person you're renting from has to pay for all the same costs, right? They have to pay to put roofs on, they have to pay to heat the building, they have to pay to buy boilers to heat the building. Okay, so the point is that unless you do a very rigorous comparison and look at all the costs, you can't make an intelligent decision. You just cannot do it. And this isn't the analysis to do it. And it doesn't improve your flexibility because it lowers your flexibility. Again, you're at the mercy of the rental market, you can only rent what's available. When you rent, you're going to have to build out. You're going to have to pay the cost of doing that. It was said, well, we can move the maintenance facility to the ASC. You're going to have to pay to modify the ASC to do that, okay? That's not in here, that's not included in here, okay? That cost isn't included in here. And in the bottom-line calculation, they didn't include what they call FFD costs at the end of the analysis. The comparison is not apples to apples. The statement is made in the memo that the highest and best use for this property is residential. You're not the planning commission, you're not the village council. Your decision is to be financially responsible for the school district. You talked about having additional revenue. Washington School was sold by the district. How did that work out? How much additional revenue are you getting out of that property because it was sold? Zero. It's owned by the Park District. If a church buys to build a church, you get zero additional revenue, and that bottom-line analysis goes very negative, very fast. There are many, many costs that are not accounted for. Living in the neighborhood, you don't appreciate the chimney swifts live in the chimney of Longfellow School. They're considered vulnerable. You're going to have to explain how it is that you can get rid of that habitat. You're going to have people suing you because of the chimney swifts. You're going to have to account for all the legal costs, you're going to have to account for the cost of abatement, and the builders will have to account for the cost of abatement of getting rid of the asbestos in the building. While you own it, you can control it. Yes, is it expensive? Yes, are there a lot of costs coming up? Yes. I was on the board in 2005 when this issue came up, okay? And we looked at it and looked at it and concluded that at bottom, we do the rigorous analysis, that it doesn't make sense to sell. My last point that I'll make, and then I have one personal note, but the last point that I will make is that you have to determine what is fiscally responsible. And as Joe pointed out, just selling a building, and when you go off and do your referendum and say, oh, well, we were fiscally responsible because we sold a $10 million asset that the district had, people who are going to oppose that referendum, they're going to rip you to shreds unless you very carefully analyze the situation and determine that that is, in fact, the most fiscally responsible step. And I can tell you right now that that analysis that was presented tonight ain't going to cut it, okay? I'm going to be the first one to support the decision to sell Longfellow, even though I live there, if you can convince me that it is the best and most fiscally responsible step that the district can take. And I haven't seen anything different than what we saw in March, the last time we were here to talk about this. And I got to tell you, I have this sense that the decision has been made. There's a reference in the memo to selling it by year-end. We are in the middle of a pandemic, one of the most uncertain times that any of us have lived through. The village council decided not to do anything with this building despite the fact its roof leaks and it has the same issues you do. You should take counsel from that. The time to sell a very valuable piece of property that you've had for decades, 60, 70 years, however old Longfellow is, is not in the middle of a pandemic when you don't know what the rental market is going to do, you don't know what price you're going to get for it, you don't know how expensive it is going to be to build. get for it, you don't know how expensive it is going to be to build because of the lack of resources. There are so many uncertainties right now, and you guys are spending so much of your time, as you should, on looking at the education of our children. And so this is a side issue, and while you're focusing all your attention on that, you're making a decision that's going to impact the district for decades to come, you need to base it on science. You need to base it on a very careful analysis, and that analysis has not been presented. I want to make one other, one other personal comment, and please, please don't take offense by this, but I found out about this meeting today, and I read through the board agenda and the materials. And then I got to the point where it said, oh, to make a public comment, if you don't want to be present, you have to call in at a very narrow time window and record your comment, and it will be played for you. Okay? I'm 61 years old, I have an underlying condition. I don't go into the grocery store, but I came here tonight because I gave eight years of my life for this board, for this school district. I live here. This institution is maybe the most important institution in this village when it comes to its future. And it means a lot to me that decisions are made logically, based upon evidence. But my point is that when I was here today watching the presentation, kindergartners know how to use Zoom. Kindergartners know how to communicate across Zoom. It seems to me that the school district can figure out a way that members of the community do not have to put their safety at jeopardy to come to a meeting and sit for three and a half hours in a closed space to present their views. And so I'd encourage you to make a Zoom alternative available for public comment so people can participate in these meetings without having to put themselves at risk. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for being here tonight. Anyone else here in attendance with a public comment? Anybody online? Okay. All right. We have some minutes to approve. Are there any suggested revisions to the minutes as presented in the packet of materials? No? All right. If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the January 11th, 2020 regular meeting as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Melissa, will you please go roll?
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchik.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried to approve the minutes of the January 11th, 2020 regular meeting as presented. We have a consent agenda tonight. Are there any items a board member would like to have considered separately? All right. If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of personnel report and financial statements consisting of the list of bills and summary as presented in the packet of materials?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Melissa, will you please go roll?
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchik.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
The motion carried, the consent agenda has been approved, is presented in the packet of materials. We have some recommendations for action tonight. We do not have any board action regarding the return to Learn Plan. So that brings us to the resolution authorizing a transfer of monies from the working cash fund to the education fund. Is there a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the transfer of monies from the working cash fund to the education fund as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right. Melissa, will you please go roll?
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchik.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried to adopt the resolution authorizing transfer of monies from the working cash fund to the education fund as presented. We have surplus equipment. Is there a motion to designate the items in the attached memo as surplus equipment?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right. Just as a note, this is a scroll saw, a pipe threading machine, a compressor, a sander, a planer slash joint, uh, jointer, and a floor machines and a smart board. All right. Melissa, will you please go roll?
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchik.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried to designate the items in the attached memo as surplus equipment. We have a couple of announcements, some dates to note. Tuesday, February 16th at 7:00 a.m. is the next policy committee at the ASC and over Zoom. And Tuesday, February 16th at 6:00 p.m. will be a special board meeting as well, at Longfellow. That's, that's not right. We don't have a special board meeting on February 16th.
No, we do for the financial. Todd, do you want to talk about 16?
Yes.
Oh, oh, yes. I remember now.
You have a special board meeting to approve the bonds and the board's resolution so we can sell the issues, provided there's an petition coming to you.
I remember now. That's going to be at 6:00 p.m. on February the 16th. It's a Tuesday.
Sorry, what did that form?
It's, we, we had our hearing today, that's the actual approve the purchase of the bonds that we had to add just because of the way our meetings fell.
That's a 30-day window.
That's a 30-day window. Right.
Maybe at Longfellow?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. The board will now meet in closed session. Is there a motion to move to closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district, 5 ILCS 122C1, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or its representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, 5 ILCS 122C2, the placement of individual students in special education programs and other matters relating to individual students, 5 ILCS 122C10, litigation when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis of the finding shall be recorded and entered in the minutes of the closed meeting, 5 ILCS 122C11, and the discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, whether for the purposes of approval by the body of the minutes or the semi-annual review of minutes is mandated by Section 2.06. That's 5 ILCS 122C21. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Melissa, will you please go roll?
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchik.
Aye.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried, the board will now move into closed session. After a short recess, we will reconvene at 10:45. All right. The board has now returned to open session. It is 11:15 p.m. We have one action as a result of closed session. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of January 11th, 2021 closed session meeting and keep them permanently closed due to the confidential nature of the contents?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Melissa, will you please go roll?
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried. Is there a motion?
Member Olchik.
Aye.
Thank you.